Good evening. Welcome, everyone, to the Cupertino City Council Meeting of October 2, 2018. If you would please join us in pledging allegiance to our nation's flag. Thank you very much. Madam City Clerk, if you would please conduct the roll call.
Councilmember Sharif.
Here.
Councilmember Vadya Nathan.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sinks.
Here.
Mayor Paul.
Here. All right, so we had a special meeting earlier today. It started at 4:00 PM. There were two items. Closed session was first. It was regarding a public employee discipline dismissal release item, Government Code Section 54957B1. We were provided an update and no action was taken. There was a study session at 5:00 that has concluded, of course, and now we are at the regular meeting. The first item that we have on our agenda tonight is a proclamation. We have two proclamations, and what I'll do is invite the representatives from each of these organizations to come and speak momentarily. And then after that, we'll have the council come up and we'll provide, as a group, the proclamations to each, so that we're not bringing the council up twice. We'll have the speakers come in and introduce their organizations. So the first proclamation that we're providing is observing September as ovarian cancer awareness month. And we have a representative from the public to give a few remarks regarding this proclamation. Her name is Erna Arnason. So, welcome, Erna.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor. Hello, City Council Members. My name is Erna Arnason. As a longtime resident of Cupertino and a recent ovarian cancer survivor, I thank you for declaring this proclamation for September as ovarian cancer awareness month. We and our neighboring communities have all been acknowledging and recognizing September for this purpose locally and worldwide. It has been the goal of Teal's Reel and many other groups to increase the awareness of ovarian cancer and its symptoms. Teal is a symbol of ovarian cancer. It is a deadly disease with symptoms that can be easily overlooked. Each year in the United States, 22,000 women are diagnosed with ovarian cancer, and each year, 14,000 of those women die. It is the fifth-leading cause of cancer deaths among women. In fact, one woman in 75 will experience ovarian cancer in her lifetime. There is no reliable diagnostic test for early detection of ovarian cancer. Therefore, it is most often diagnosed in the later stages. Only 19% of ovarian cancer is diagnosed early. Late-stage diagnosis, such as myself, have a survival rate of only 20 to 50% for more than five years. However, if diagnosed early, only 90% of women are likely to survive for more than five years, and many for 20 or more. So it's important to know the symptoms, which are nonspecific or silent, and it is also important to be persistent in following up with these symptoms with your medical professionals. They can be life-saving, and I hope they have been life-saving for me. We will find out pretty soon. There are many risk factors and ways to prevent ovarian cancer, and knowing these can help you or the women you love to avoid developing ovarian cancer. In conclusion, Teal's Reel seeks to educate others on these facts and symptoms. Thank you for bringing more visibility to Cupertino. I appreciate your interest, and I have some information that I'm happy to share with the council. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Erna. Greatly appreciate it. You could provide the information to our city clerk, and thank you very much for your efforts to bring awareness to this form of cancer. Our second proclamation is for the Tournament of Bands. They have been going 47 years strong, and we have Addie Roth, the president of the organization, here this evening to provide a few updates, as well as to let the public know about the upcoming event going on at Cupertino High School in a couple of weekends. Welcome.
Thank you so much. Hello, City Council. Hello, Mayor. Thanks for having us tonight. We...I'm bringing up a few of my counterparts on the booster board. An event like the Tournament of Bands, which has been going on since 1971, does not happen without a huge amount of work from a huge amount of volunteers. We literally have hundreds of people working on this event, and it takes the support of the city, the school, the school district, the sheriff, many volunteer organizations to make TOB happen. This year, we have 20 bands coming from all over Northern California. The farthest one is coming from Merced. So we are super excited to bring these bands to Cupertino. They're gonna be...we'll be hosting a parade down Stevens Creek Boulevard, and then a field show competition in the evening. This year is a little bit different. We normally host TOB all day, starting in the morning. If anybody's been living in Cupertino for a while, hopefully, I imagine you've come by with your kids at some point in time. This year, our parade starts in the afternoon. We've got testing happening on the school campus in the morning, so it's a slightly consolidated timeframe. So the parade will start at 2:30 on Stevens Creek, across from Main Street, in front of the Bank of America. So that's happening between Miller and Finch Boulevard. And then we have our field show competitions happening in the evening, and that starts at 6:15. So we get thousands of people that come out for this event. It's a great thing for the city, and we just love how much it shows our support for the music program at our schools, and just it's a great demonstration of the hard work and commitment of all of our kids that put into their band. This is Andy Kitigawa. She's our vice president, and she looks after our volunteering at the school. And this is Ed Sareau, who is our...
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt. If they could wait just 10 seconds while they reset something with the sound, it'll...that will go away.
Okay. Thank you very much, Madam City Clerk.
We can wait.
Are we all set? Apparently not.
Test, 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 test.
So it looks like our technical difficulties have been resolved, and so thank you very much for our recipients of the proclamations. We look forward to the Tournament of Bands, as well as, you know, hopefully getting a cure, frankly, for ovarian cancer and other forms of cancer in the future. So thanks very much for all the efforts that both of your organizations are putting forward. Our next item on the agenda, after proclamations, is postponements. Madam City Clerk, do we have any postponements requested for this agenda?
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right, and the item after that is oral communications. Oral communications are for any items that a member of the public wishes to speak about that are not agendized on our agenda this evening. Madam City Clerk, do we have any oral communication requests tonight?
Yes, they're right underneath your agenda.
Oh, very good. So I have what looks to be about half a dozen. The first are from Herb Whiffler and Dan Rosenbaum, and then Ignatius Dean. So welcome, Herb, or Don Rosenbaum, I should say, and then followed by Ignatius Dean. Welcome, Herb. And you'll have three minutes to provide your commentary. Yes, please. So we do have an overhead projector available if you'd like to present some material.
I think I know how it works, but let's try it. Herb, you can come on up with your...thank you. How do you turn it on?
That will be controlled by the city clerk from the dais when she gets back. Okay, and we'll have to zoom out, obviously, so if anyone can hear us. Great. Keep zooming. And maybe move that up a little bit in the...great, perfect.
How's that? Okay.
All right, welcome.
Good. Okay. My name is Don Rosenbaum. I've been a resident in Cupertino for 46 years.
Sir, you'll need to speak into the microphone, however. Thank you.
My name is Don Rosenbaum. I've been a resident in Cupertino for 46 years, approaching 47, and then living in the same home at 7633 Prospect Road. Joining me is Mr. Herb Whiffler. Herb has been...come on. Herb has been living on Prospect Road in a house...what was your address?
7585 Prospect Road, and I have lived at the place for 46 years, and the last three years have not been very pleasant, because we had a...somebody opened up a garbage dump next to us, has dogs that bark all day, all night, that we can't get to sleep. Where I have to go to the senior center to get some sleep during the day, and it's just awful.
Okay, that's why we're here tonight, Herb.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, on September 24th, a letter and petition was sent to you, City Council Members, signed by 24 residents, all living on Prospect Road. This was submitted along with nine attachments with supporting documentations, covering all the correspondences, and also we also provided all the regulations. The petition read is...you can see it here. You'll have it in your packet, and you've already received it in our petition letter, so I won't go through it tonight. Let's get this lined up, Herb. Since October 2015, these residents have all endured this public nuisance that is having a deteriorating effect and influence in conditions on downgrading our Prospect Road safety, aesthetics, and property values. We have contacted or visited the Code Enforcement Agency, the Sheriff's Department, city manager, the mayor, at the time, Ms. Vita, and we've asked for them to mitigate and correct many problems, and they've been trying, but without success. Now we feel that we need legislation, action, in order to rectify this blight in our community. Here is a list of a few of the problems and complaints. Abandoned vehicle. A large, inoperative, wrecked, and neglected truck has been parked in front for over two years. Enforcement has towed it away once, but the resident had it returned. It's in violation of Code 1104019. A second truck with expired California license plate, the date of expiration of the license plate is November 2014, is still being used, specifically at night.
Don, I'll give you another two minutes. Typically, we have each speaker speak for three minutes. So if you'd like to have Herb take the time...
Herb and I are doing it together, so that's what we want to do, six.
Okay, great. Okay, wonderful. So you've gone through your three minutes, so it'll be Herb's if...
It's exactly four minutes long here.
Okay, got it, got it.
Okay, here's just a photograph of that abandoned...that truck that's been there for all this time, and you will notice below the truck is a lot of gravel. He tore up the driveway a couple of years ago and has done nothing to the driveway. So we wanted to show you that. Number two, the property maintenance. Unlawful acts in front of the yard of loose materials, temporary fences, accumulation of litter and scrap materials exist, and the house is in a state of condition that is depreciating the aesthetics and property values. And this gentleman here has got his house up for sale now, just two houses away, so that's why he's here tonight. And I mentioned the driveway that's torn up and not replaced. There's constant debris being left on the sidewalk posing a hazard to many of the pedestrians who walk every night. So we would like to see that cleaned up, although according enforcement, they're trying. This is what it looks like. He put up a fence that is now locked, so you can't get in there, but he has everything hidden by tarps, and in front, there's a lot of garbage. You can see a lot of garbage. It's always a mess, and it changes from day to day, week to week, so it's just a mess. So it needs to be cleaned up, and code enforcement is spending a lot of time there, a lot of time and precious money that we really shouldn't need to spend. So we're here tonight. We request the city council to pass a resolution declaring the property located at 7573 Prospect Road a public nuisance. And this would be in accordance with the City of Cupertino Municipal Code Title 1, Chapter 1, 09, nuisance abatement. We like...thank you for your attention. We look forward to your support of this request, and we're here to answer any questions you may have regarding this presentation.
During oral communications, we don't ask questions of the commenters, but...and also with regard to follow-ups, we don't direct staff at this time, but at the end of each council meeting, we do have council reports and comments, at which point I would imagine there will probably be a request from our council to have staff follow up on this item. So thanks very much.
All right, thank you.
All right, you're welcome. Our next public comment card is from Ignatius Dean, and Ignatius is followed by Kathy Choli, followed by Ilango Ganga. Welcome, Ignatius.
Sorry, Ms. Mayor. Mr. Mayor and member of the council and city manager, my name is Ignatius Dean. I've been here before. I'm a resident of 41 years in Cupertino. I'm here to speak up because the decision made two weeks ago, now we have to breathe dirty air for 10 years at the minimum, and the council has decided, the majority of the five-member council insist that the health hazard is unavoidable, must be tolerated by the residents of Cupertino to allow a monstrous development to proceed at the Valco Shopping Center in the name of progress and growth. On September 18th, Tuesday, the gain of three has brushed off a serious health hazard stated in the Valco ERR submitted by the expert, including the ultra-excessive air pollution and particular matters PM-10 and PM-2.5, most dangerous to respiratory system in children and senior, as well as a significant cancer risk for all Cupertinoan, and approved the tenure construction then will harm us all forever thereafter. Today, I'm calling on all citizens to rise up against the tyranny in our city, and I will remain here for the rest of three minutes in protest. Power to the people, and we will hold all of you accountable.
Thank you, Ignatius. Our next speaker is Kathy...please, let's have order here. Thank you. Our next speaker is Kathy Choli, followed by Ilango Ganga, followed by Annika McClure. And Annika's is the last speaker card that I have. Welcome, Kathy.
Thank you. The Regnock Creek feasibility study, as you know, was approved on August 21st without taking into account the 22 comments that came from the Santa Clara Valley Water District. There are gross errors in the study that clearly demonstrate the effort to an end to an end result while not addressing the obvious errors and misstated comments within the study. It is clear that staff, the hired consultant, and city council ignored the district's letter prior to approval of the feasibility study. As a resident, I find that I have no choice. However, you must listen to the Water District. All 22 items must be addressed prior to the final adoption of the study. This letter was actually submitted previously for the public record, and I want to draw your attention to a few items that we, as the community, identified and fell on deaf ears, but now we have the Water District reemphasizing the same concerns. The first one, of course, is in their opening statement that we have a problem with flood control, with the way we're going to approach using alternative number one. And I know you have this letter and you can read it. The second item is pertaining to that alternative, and those of us that were not in favor of using this trail, we elected alternative four and five, which is also true that the Water District supports, with item number one, alternative one being the most invasive for the creek and watershed. Item number six is the creek conditions. The feasibility study states that the channel has no erosion. This is just wrong. There is evidence from the Water District that there is erosion throughout the creek from East Estates to Pacifica Drive, which is where the creek will reside. The banks on these are unstable. Moving on to number 19, this one has to do with security and safety. We're brushed off as wanting security and safety, but most bank slopes are steeper than the three-to-one, and at three-to-one, no fencing is required. A fence two feet, which has been proposed in the feasibility study, reduces usability space, understanding that a vehicle needs more than eight feet to access the creek. Secondary screening will take another 18 inches or so, further reducing the width of the maintenance. Then on to number 22. This is security measure evaluation and recommendation. It states that removable fencing posts is consistent with many creekside trails. This is not found to be the case per the Water District. Staff and...staff has reportedly stated that they have consensus from the Water District for the project, and several of you have claimed that you did your research. Based on the district's assessment of the study, this is unfounded. Addressing the district's 22 items needs to be done. And my final request is, what is going to happen to those most-risk residents on De Palma and Lozano Lane? You said that, and we were told by Tim Borden on August 21st, that they would have that completed within months. It's been six weeks, and there has been zero outreach to those folks. I don't live there, but they have the most to lose for this trail.
Thank you, Kathy. Thank you very much. And as stated earlier, we can direct follow-up at the end of our meeting during council contacts. Our next speaker is Ilango Ganga, followed by Annika McClure. Welcome, Ilango.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm here to talk about the flaws in the Regnock Creek feasibility study that was recently approved by the council and point out that the city prematurely put forward the resolution without proper due diligence of the study and prior review by the Water District. So as per the letter by the Water District to the city, the district does not want the city to move forward with the feasibility study without addressing its comments. Instead, the city council went ahead with approving the plan the very same evening. The city has an obligation to remedy the errors and restrictions brought forward by the Water District as the trail is on the district property. I will emphasize few major flaws that affect the trail feasibility and user safety based on the Water District's comments. First, on item number five, the feasibility study incorrectly states that the available width of the trail is 12 to 25 feet, whereas as per the Water District, the available width is only 10 to 15 feet, or even less, along the creek due to erosion. There is simply not enough space to build a Class 1 shared-use bike and pedestrian path that can ensure user safety per national, state, or county guidelines. Several residents, including me, pointed this width issue to the city council, and our concerns were brushed aside now that you have it from the Water District. According to the district, I'm going to point out the next one, is item number 15. According to the district, a safety railing will not be allowed on the creek bank on its right-of-way, as the proposed railing affects the creek maintenance operations. The district states that the creek slope is deeper than...
Excuse me, could you slide that up a bit so we can read it? Your highlighted part? Thank you.
So the district states that the creek slope is deeper than three is to one. Such a steep slope requires railings to ensure user safety. The study and the staff at the council meeting misled the public and the council to believe that various types of railings would be allowed by the Water District, whereas this is not the case as per the district comments. The third, the proposed bridge will affect the creek bank and require regulatory approvals, which will increase the cost. These additional costs were not made transparent to the public during the August 21st meeting. There are many other substantive issues raised by the Water District that will affect the trail feasibility. So this raises the question, why did the city management bring forward a resolution to spend $350,000 of taxpayer money on EIR without first doing proper due diligence of the feasibility study? The council voted based on a flawed report, and the public were misled, that affects the trail feasibility. So I request the mayor and the council to direct the city manager to address the flaws and bring a corrected study back for public comments and for review by the city council. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Ilango. Our next speaker is Annika McClure. Welcome, Annika.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor Paul and city council members. My name is Annika McClure, and I'm with the Silicon Valley Leadership Group, and I'm here today to invite you to our annual Turkey Trot. It's the Applied Materials Silicon Valley Turkey Trot. And what it is, it's a five-k runner walk, a ten-k run, or a kids' fun run. And all the proceeds for this event, they will benefit five different organizations, including the Second Harvest Food Bank, the Healthier Kids Foundation, the Health Trust, and the Housing Trust. This event takes place on November 22nd, 2018. That's Thanksgiving morning, and it's at 8:00 a.m. in downtown San Jose, and we're really looking forward to having you guys attend. If you'd like to register, you can do so at sbturkeytrot.com. And you all have flyers, and I'll leave some flyers in the auditorium.
Great. Thank you, Annika. All right. So that is our last speaker card for oral communications. At this point, we have consent calendar, which is items number three through eleven. Is there a request for a motion with regard to the consent calendar, or are there any requests to poll items from numbers three through eleven? Madam City Clerk, were there any requests from the public to do so?
No, Mr. Mayor.
No? Okay. And from council?
Is this for something on consent?
You submitted an item?
Which number? Which agenda item?
Well, that's not consent, sir. We'll get to that. All right, please have a seat. So we have consent items numbers three through eleven on our agenda.
I move the council to approve consent item number three through eleven.
Second.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second from council members Chang, Vaidyathen, respectively. Please vote with your lights.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right. Thank you very much. We are now at item number twelve. It is the second reading of an ordinance regarding the designation of an additional preferential parking zone on Noble Fur Court, Red Fur Court, and White Fur Court. This has been continued from September 18th, and I believe we have our Director of Public Works, Tim Borden, to introduce the item. Welcome, Tim.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, Tim Borden, Director of Public Works. This is the second reading. There's been no additional information received since the first reading. It was continued because the second reading cannot be on a special council meeting, which the last one was.
Okay, very good. Any questions from council of Director Borden? No? We do have one speaker card, and it is from Amar Sagapura.
Yes.
Welcome. And you'll be provided three minutes as well to speak.
Yeah, I am coming on the follow-up of the first hearing, and I'm requesting for the permit of the residential preferred parking.
Can you speak up a little?
Yeah, maybe a little closer to the microphone.
Can you hear? Yeah.
Just hold it and go right into it.
I'm talking behalf of Roundtree Cupertino, and I've come for the second hearing in order for us to give approval for the residential parking which is being submitted to the city.
Okay, very good. Thanks very much. Any questions of the speaker? All right. We'll bring it back to the dais. Are there any follow-ups on this item?
The clerk need to read.
Yep.
Yeah, and Madam City Clerk, if you would please conduct the second reading of this ordinance?
Sure. This is the second reading of ordinance number eighteen dash two-one-seven-six, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cupertino, amending Cupertino Municipal Code Section 11.27.145, designating additional preferential parking zones to add Noble Fur Court, Red Fur Court, and White Fur Court.
Is there a motion with regard to the second reading?
I move that--
Go ahead, Barry.
You want, you have question, or you want to move?
No, either way, go ahead.
Okay. I move that the ordinance, the ordinance number eighteen dash two-one-seven-six be read by title only, and that the city clerk's reading constitute the second reading thereof.
Very good. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Chang motions, and Vice Mayor Ting seconds. Please vote with your lights.
Motion carries unanimously.
Very good. Is there another motion regarding enactment?
I move that ordinance number eighteen dash two-one-seven-six be enacted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Chang motions, and Vice Mayor Ting's seconds. Please vote with your lights again.
Motion carries unanimously.
Very good. We are now at our second, second reading of ordinances, and the subject is a second reading and enactment of ordinances to amend the municipal code to allow adoption and implementation of the Valco Town Center specific plan and other related items. We have various members of our Community Development Department here, including our Director of the Department, RT Srivastava, as well as Pugosh, and-- Help me out. I'm sorry. I'm blanking with the--
Caterina Kid.
Caterina Kid, yes. Thank you. Welcome, Kat. So they will be providing an update with regard to our second reading items, and so welcome, and please proceed.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is, as you stated, second reading of the Valco Town Center specific plan ordinances. The introduction of ordinances, first reading, was on September 19th, 2018. Ordinance number eighteen dash two-one-seven-seven, eighteen dash two-one-seven-eight, and eighteen dash two-one-seven-nine. The red lines, we had some question about some edits. The summary here for each ordinance is the conforming edits made to each ordinance. For ordinance eighteen dash two-one-seven-seven for municipal code amendments, number one, we deleted draft in the heading of the ordinance; two, added dates to EIR recital; three, documented reference to meeting on September 19th, 2018, continued from September 18th, 2018 throughout the document; and we edited the date of introduction and city council motion from September 18th to September 19th. For ordinance eighteen dash two-one-seven-eight for rezoning, we deleted draft in the heading of the ordinance; two, added dates and resolution number to EIR recital; three, documented reference to meeting on September 19th, 2018, continued from September 18th, 2018 throughout the document; number four, edited the date of introduction and city council motion from September 18th to September 19th. For ordinance eighteen dash two-one-seven-nine regarding the development agreement, we, number one, deleted draft in the heading of the ordinance; two, edited the application number and applicant; three, deleted parcel numbers three-one-six dash twenty dash zero-eight-eight and three-one-six dash twenty dash zero-nine-two. In your printed packet, it adds a reference to the KCR properties and the Simeon properties. Those are the two parcel numbers for those parcels. The development agreement does not apply to those parcels. Number four, we edited the naming convention to be consistent reference to Valco Town Center. Number five, added details to recital regarding EIR, including dates and the State Clearinghouse number. And number six, we edited the date of introduction and city council motion from September 18th to September 19th. Regarding the development agreement exhibit, four edits between last meeting and the motion and this current version. Number one, we deleted the footage document number. That's just an internal reference number. It doesn't, it's not something that lives on in the final development agreement. Number two, updated page numbers and table contents. Some of the pages had shifted, so the numbers have changed. Number three, we added dates where there were blanks in the recitals, pages two and three. And number four, we added the ordinance number on page five. Lastly, these last four, pardon the numbering, we added in effect as of the effective date. It's shown in the diagram or the image there to make sure that the reference to the general plan remains, remains consistent with what's in effect at the time. The next one, we updated, changed the word "update" and replaced it with "updates of existing regarding sanitary sewer capacity." And for the words "insufficient" was replaced with the word, quote, "inadequate" on page 20. The last two edits are also relatively clerical. We deleted "the" in front of reference to the Fremont Union High School District in Section 5.3.1, and the words, quote, "to CUSD" was added to Section 5.3.2 on page 29. And lastly, we added the phrase "extremely low income" to clarify Section C of Exhibit D dash four. And those are, is a summary of the edits. We recommend you conduct the second reading and enact ordinance eighteen dash two-one-seven-seven, two-one-seven-eight, and eighteen dash two-one-seven-nine. Thank you.
Okay. Are there, thank you very much, Caterina. Are there any questions from council? Councilmember Scharf?
So I have a question for the acting city attorney. So the two ordinances that we're voting on here tonight are dependent on the resolutions that were passed two weeks ago. So how can we be voting on ordinances when those resolutions are not yet in effect? Because the general plan amendment, it doesn't become effective for thirty days after it was signed by the mayor. So if the general plan amendment isn't effective until sometime later in October, I mean, how can we be approving those ordinances here tonight? It's inconsistent. Or if we approve them, do they not go into effect until after those resolutions take effect in thirty days? I mean, how does that work?
So I'll try to answer your questions. Those are good questions. We also have special counsel here that can provide additional responses. The resolutions that the council approved last hearing are, have been approved. You are correct that they do not, those that are legislative in nature do not become effective until thirty days after approval. The ordinances that you have are also presented to you for approval at this time. In terms of when they become effective for purposes of either referendum or another initiative is a different question. It doesn't preclude the council from approving the ordinances before you, since you have already approved the resolutions that were presented to you at the last meeting. If there's anything to be, I would ask Eric Phillips to comment or Karen Murphy.
I would just, thank you. I would just like to add that the ordinances all include provisions that say they're effective thirty days following their adoption. So if you look, for example, at ordinance number eighteen dash two-one-seven-seven, Section Seven, that provides that it's effective thirty days thereafter.
Right. But it doesn't become effective in thirty days unless those resolutions are also effective. If something happens to those resolutions, then the ordinance would not be, become effective after thirty days. Is that true?
If the resolutions do not become effective after thirty days, then while the ordinances would be effective, there would be, they would be, you know, basically questionable, voidable, as they would not be consistent with a specific plan. So you are correct--
Right, okay. Right, yeah. I just wanted to get that on the record, that the ordinances, I mean, we approved them here tonight, and once the resolutions are approved in thirty days, if they are, then the ordinances would become effective. So, yeah, I just wanted to get that, get that clear and on the record. Thank you.
And you're welcome. And just to be clear, the three ordinances are different. So are the resolutions. So some of them would impact the ordinances, and some wouldn't. So they're very specific. But as to the, some of the ordinances, you are correct. That will be the outcome.
Okay, very good. Are there other questions from council with regard to the presentation, or of staff, or outside consultants? If not, I do have seventeen speaker cards, along with a request to our council to refrain from questions, if that would be amenable to everyone here. I do have a request from within our membership that, you know, one of us is a bit under the weather and would like to be able to proceed, and if we can just get consent. Does anyone not agree to that in terms of asking questions of our speakers? Okay, great. So tonight, we have, as our first three speakers, I have a pair in the first speaker card, Sujatha Venkatrahman and Monica Chandra. The second speaker card is Andrew Walter, followed by Jan Stokely. Welcome, Sujatha and Monica.
Hi. My name is Monica, and Sujatha's on her way over, but she may not make it in time. But just wanted to say good evening, and on behalf of West Valley Community Services, we wanted to thank Vice Mayor Ting, Councilmember Chang, and Councilmember Vaidyathen for voting in the specific plan at the last meeting. We believe that the best course of action for the city right now is to use this momentum to move forward, and we have two good options on the table that deliver a high level of new housing as well as affordable housing at Valco, and we look forward to seeing what happens. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. And thank you for being concise about it. Our next speaker is Andrew Walter, as well as, followed by Jan Stokely, followed by Jeff Paulson. Welcome, Andrew.
Thank you, council. Thank you, mayor. I will be quick, given that I don't know who is feeling under the weather, but I am sympathetic, so I will be as quick as possible. I just want to reemphasize and thank those of you that supported the Valco project. The Cupertino Chamber continues to believe that the redevelopment of Valco, as well as other properties, is an opportunity to enhance our great community. Supporting redevelopment is one of our key priorities. We still believe that the specific plan represents a viable and supportable vision for the revitalization of Valco. It was put together with lots of work, over one hundred hours of community input. It's one of the biggest, one of the biggest strengths is the specific plan's dramatic traffic mitigations, as well as the generous community benefits package. And that's something that I hope that we, as a community, will actually get to receive. It would be a shame to miss out on that, and I hope the community supports us in moving that forward. From transportation benefits, I think it would be a great location, especially when combined with Apple, to create a transportation hub for our community. From a housing benefits, housing is one of the key issues that we have in our community today. We need more affordable housing. This provides a down payment on that affordable housing. From my perspective, we need even more. So in conclusion, we urge the city council to again approve the specific plan tonight, and this has been a long road. We need to finally build Valco. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Our next speaker is Jeff Paulson, and Jeff is followed by Orin Mahoney, who is followed by Kylie Liao. Welcome, Jeff.
Good evening, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry. Jeff, I'm sorry. It was actually Jan Stokely who was after you. And is Jan here this evening? Welcome, Jan. Thank you, Jeff. Welcome, Jan.
Good evening, Mayor and city council. I'm Jan Stokely, Executive Director of Housing Choices. On behalf of Housing Choices and the many parents who participated in the Housing Choices Cupertino Task Force throughout the Valco specific plan process, I want to thank you for adopting the specific plan. It reflects a lot of work, a lot of input, a lot of balancing of competing visions and competing needs, and has much to offer the community far beyond the SB 35 proposal. In one respect, the project really advances the vision of Cupertino as an inclusive city. There's specific provision to include extremely low-income people with developmental disabilities in the housing component. Far and above that, that specific type of inclusion, the housing overall is really designed to help Cupertino address the housing needs of many diverse parts of the community. So we strongly support the specific plan, and thank you for all your work and the staff and the consultants for gathering so much community input and for putting together a package that's not only a solid core plan, but many significant community benefits. Thank you.
Thank you, Jan. Our next speaker is Jeff Paulson, followed by Orin Mahoney, followed by Kylie Liao. Welcome, Jeff.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, honorable council members. I'm speaking as a private citizen, although I'm Chair of the Planning Commission. A few thoughts about last meeting, about Valco. The first is civility. When I heard people shouting, clapping, trying to drown out people and other, of other opinions, I was reminded of a videotape I saw of a certain unnamed public official who I saw earlier this year grab a microphone from someone standing right where I am and declare, "You can't talk. You're not from Cupertino." And that, in my mind, is an act of physical bullying. I was in charge of violence prevention in the county, and we trained fourth graders how to refrain from that kind of behavior. And that kind of behavior in a public forum or in a, in a community, if left unchecked, can give rise to further acts of violence. So I see a number of young people here in the room taking notes, and I would ask you to write down three words, "We are civilized." Okay? Okay? Second thing is equality. When I saw that unnamed public official grab the microphone and declare, "You can't talk, you're not from here," that reminded me that we are all equal. It says so in the Declaration of Independence, the courts have affirmed this, and if we do not treat each other as equal in every way, no matter what we look like, how we believe, how we worship, where we come from, or where we currently live, then we are not being treated equal. So again, I would urge our young people to write down in your notes, "We are equal." Third thing is democracy. We live in a democracy, and although we don't always like the way votes turn out, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate what you told me the other night, that you will abide by the decision of the majority of the council with regard to Valco. We may not all like how the council votes, but in a democracy, we elect our leaders, and we expect our leaders to vote. They may not vote the way we like. Elections may not vote, it may not end up according to our will. However, we are committed to a democratic process. And with Valco, I think that it's unconscionable for people to threaten lawsuits, referenda, again, that would cost us eleven million dollars, this is done before. I think it's time to move forward, and especially to respect the democratic process to which we all describe. So, young people, write down in your notes, "We are a democracy." Thank you.
All right, thank you, Jeff. Our next speaker is Orin Mahoney, followed by Kylie Liao, followed by David Wei. Welcome, Orin.
Good evening, Mayor Paul and city council. I think most of the people in the room know I'm running for city council this time. If they don't, I'm in big trouble. Part of running for city council is walking precincts, and I've been doing that, especially around the Valco area, the area adjacent to Valco. I personally knocked on close to eight hundred doors, which means I've talked to almost four hundred people. So what am I hearing when I knock on those doors and talk to people? I have fairly long or short conversations. People are amazingly up to speed on what's going on with Valco, but it does end up with the point of, we've got two choices. We've got the Valco specific plan, or we've got SB thirty-five. Once people realize that, and many of them do, I've only had one person that said they prefer SB thirty-five over the Valco specific plan. Ironically, it was somebody that was handing out referendum leaflets in the same precinct I was at. He likes the SB thirty-five plan because he likes office. Go figure. So what do they want us to do? What do the residents want us to do? They want the council, the current council, and whatever council exists here after the next election, to now work together to make the best possible project within that Valco specific plan. Now what does that mean by the best project? It means that the public spaces should be the most vibrant. It means the affordable housing should be there for the teachers that need it. It means that the traffic should be mitigated as much as possible within the mitigation criteria that are in there. It means that the form and function of the buildings should protect the adjoining properties and still provide open space. All those things are still to be done by this council and the future council, and that's what I'm hearing that people want. They want a council that works together to build the best absolute project that they can for the city of Cupertino. Thank you.
Thank you, Orin. Our next speaker is Kylie Liao, followed by David Wei, followed by Jean Bedord. Welcome, Kylie.
Hi, city councils, members, audience, good evening. I'm, my name is Kylie Liao. I'm a resident of Cupertino, and I have a, I'm here to thanks for the approval of Tier Two specific plan for the EOI housing at the Valco site. I'm a parent with an adult child with disability. My son has been volunteering in the library for some years, once a week, constantly, as well as a few senior centers, like Sunny View and the West Valley Community Services. He likes to be working and living independently in the future. However, we are expecting he will be living close by from the family. We are looking for the affordable housing for him. While, while the other cities has proved, has provided some affordable housing for their residents with disabilities, here in Cupertino, we haven't have one at all yet. So, we are hoping we may have the same availabilities for our adult children with disabilities. We are advocating for our dream to come true. Thank you for your listening. Thank you.
Thank you, Kylie. Our next speaker is David Wei, followed by Jean Bedord, who is followed by Jim Walker. Welcome, David.
Hi, my name is David Wei. I'm the founder of organization of special needs families in Cupertino. And today, it's my pleasure to bring my son here to face you. This is a one life example of full community integration, and I'm not only talking about special needs, I'm talking about teachers, we're talking about musicians, we're talking about policemen, we're talking about people who make our city a wonderful city. So, today, I want to make sure, but I want to echo Martin Luther King's famous word, "I have a dream." But I tell you, today, many of us also have a dream. I know that whenever a dream comes closer, there's always objections, but if we work together, that our dream will come true. And I, I'm here to plead to you, to pass this project, and make our dream come true, and make Cupertino an even wonderful city for everyone to live in there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, David, and thank you to your son as well. Our next speaker is Jean Bedord, followed by Jim Walker, followed by David Meyer. Welcome, Jean.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Paul and city council. My name is Jean Bedord, and I am, as you know, a longtime resident. I was here in this council chamber two weeks ago to urge you to approve the Valco Town Center. I sat through all nine hours of the council meeting on Tuesday, and then again for more than five hours on Wednesday night. I listened to those seventy-plus comments from the public, the emails, and I commend you for your thoroughness in taking those into account in considering the plans. At the end of the night, you came to a majority decision to accept the specific plan and development agreement. I urge you to finalize that decision with the second reading by again affirming that majority vote. No plan is perfect, enough with the delays. Let's move ahead and start building a Valco that our community can be proud of, instead of a decaying mall. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. Our next speaker is Jim Walker, followed by David Meyer, followed by Marie Liu. Welcome, Jim.
Good evening. This is the first time I appeared before the city council in Cupertino. I remember doing that in nineteen seventy-seven, and in nineteen seventy-eight, forty years ago, I signed a lease with a company nobody knew about, but I signed it with a guy named Steve Jobs. It was for the first freestanding building down on Banley Drive, and it was called Apple Banley One. Over the last forty years, and did I say I've lived here fifty years? I've been a good resident, homeowner, owned three different homes, and I've always supported the city council. I think you're doing a good job. I think you continue to do a good job. But I'm a little worried that we're getting some, some civil discourse that's not to my way of thinking, and I'd like to tell you, I support your decisions. I want to go ahead and build the Valco project. I like Tier Two. I've seen it, I've been around, I've been around through the, the other iterations a few years ago. I think we're on our way to doing something that I'll be proud of. And I don't know if I can stay here another fifty years, but I think, over the next few years, I'm going to be real proud of what we do, and I commend you for your efforts, and I want you to continue what you're doing now. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Our next speaker is Marie Liu, followed by David Meyer, followed by Guan Jin Tang.
Mayor Paul and honorable council members, my name is Marie, and I live in Cupertino as a renter. I'm here tonight to voice my support for the Tier Two plan. I spoke at the last meeting, and I'm here again because I still care. We have an opportunity to create a lot of new housing, and not, and not insignificant amount of which will be below market rate. That'll make Cupertino more affordable for all kinds of people, including teachers, custodial staff, waiters, retail workers, and all the other folks who support Cupertino's way of life. If we cause delays, we lose community benefits, either through the Tier Two stipulation, or by encouraging the developer to pursue their SB thirty-five plan that provides far fewer community benefits. But far worse is the possibility of letting the land stand unused for potentially years during this ever worse, during this ever worsening housing crisis. I think that's unacceptable, so please have the courage not to delay development. Thank you.
Thank you, Marie. Our next speaker is David Meyer, followed by Guan Jin Tang, followed by Sabrina Risk. Welcome, David. David? Is David here? I didn't actually see David. Probably, might have gone home. Guan Jin Tang, followed by Sabrina Risk, followed by Ganesh, Ganesh Shure, or Shure. Welcome, Guan Jin.
Hi, good evening. My name is Guang Yu Tang. I'm, I'm Cupertino resident. I cannot hear. Oh, hi, my name is Guang Yu Tang. I'm Cupertino resident. I'm here tonight because I request for inclusive housing for people who is disabled, are developed with disability. And I'm here because I'm the parent who has kids, adult kids with disability. We moved here only three years. Since then, my son has been in volunteer here for a variety place. So we found they can do a very good job, but they also need our help. So here, I'm, hope they can get some support from this beautiful city, and as parents, we're working together. Thank you.
Thank you, Guang Yu. Our next speaker is Sabrina Risk, followed by Ganesh Shure, followed by Regina Thomas. Welcome, Sabrina.
Good evening, Mayor Paul, Vice Mayor Sinks, and city council members. My name is Sabrina Risk, and I'm a resident in Cupertino. In Cupertino's two thousand and five general plan, well before Apple Park was even an idea, the Valco South site was identified as a Valco regional commercial, entertainment, and residential mixed use. The Valco North site was identified as commercial, light industrial, R and D, with a lesser degree of residential. Moving forward to two thousand and fourteen, we see a similar vision articulated in chapter two of the general plan, which states, "The city envisions the Valco Shopping District area as a new mixed-use town center and gateway to Cupertino." The North Park Valco area is envisioned to become a sustainable office and campus environment surrounded by a mix of connected, high-quality, and pedestrian-oriented neighborhood center, hotels, and residential uses. It is very clear to me that the people in this community have wanted a mixed-use development at Valco for well over ten years. In rejecting measures C and D in the last election, the voters sent a signal that any proposal for Valco needs to go through the normal city planning process. Tier Two is going through the normal planning process. I also want to point out that those council members who voted in favor of Tier Two also received the most number of votes in their respective election. So now, after a decade of waiting, we finally have a specific plan that provides for a mixed-use development at Valco, approved by the majority of council, who in turn were elected with the most number of votes. Now that a decision has been made, it's time for council and community members to respect that decision and to band together to work with the developer in turning our vision into reality. To that end, I call on all council members to unanimously support the second reading for the Valco specific plan and development agreement tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Sabrina. Our next speaker is Ganesh Shure, followed by Regina Thomas, followed by Feng Ye. Welcome, Ganesh.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and the Cupertino council members. So I'm here to thank you for approving the specific plan two weeks ago, and specifically including the section about the developmentally disabled in the, the agreement. And I just want to echo some of the sentiments that have been presented by some of the other parents, as well as the Cupertino citizens. The need for the affordable housing for extremely low-income, and also the developmentally disabled adults is growing, and it will continue to grow. So, as we go forward, there will be other development proposals coming in front of the city council, and I urge the city council to keep, not forget this section of the community, and take that into consideration as you consider other plans. And also, I, I am in support of the second reading, and I hope you approve the specific plan in the second reading and the vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Ganesh. Our next speaker is Regina Thomas. Welcome, Regina, followed by Feng Ye, followed by Pete Heller.
Good evening, Mayor Paul and all the council members. Thank you so much for supporting the plan and approving that without any delay at that time. And for those who didn't vote for that plan as well, thank you for your energy and your hard work, and I'm sure you have your reasons, as well as your foresight into what prevent you from voting for the, the plan. I am part of the Housing Choices, and I do have a disabled child, and so it was really happy for our family to see that the plan was approved after many years of not being approved. And I hope that Cupertino, city of Cupertino, will continue to make our disabled children be part of the Cupertino city, and move forward with the plans, and, and also approve the second reading without any further delay. As somebody said that, every time you pass the Valco, it is really emotional to see that building sit there and not do anything, and there is such a huge need for the children with disability, and the teachers, and everyone who supports the disability community. So I'm here to speak on their behalf, and I want to thank you and hope the plan moves forward. Also, I just want to add one more thing, or perhaps ask a question to the council members here. Since we are trying to include the disabled, developmentally disabled children and persons, I'm just wondering how come we don't have a person here with a sign language so that they can be included as part of these talks, and know that they are part of this community as well? So I just want to know if there was anything considered in the future, for the future hearings, with the sign language assistance. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Regina. Our next speaker is Feng Ye, followed by Pete Heller, followed by Jennifer Griffin. Welcome, Feng.
Last time, my, two weeks ago, my plan landed like ten PM, so I, when I come here, it's too late for me to fire a card. So anyways, I'm really honored to be, to be the first that calls for opposing. So, listen to my reason, as I have carefully listened to yours, why I'm opposed this. So, first, I'm representing myself, I don't affiliate with any people, other people. So I have made my own fly, that guy that Oling referred is me. So I met him in my, in my way. Hello? And then I gave him my fly, and I told him that, the stuff that he said. So- So first, I tried to find some common grounds, okay? So first, I would say that I'm in the middle ground. I like office. Why? Because I used to work here in lab one to six, in that high building here. It moves to, later on, we grow bigger and then we cannot fit, so we moved to Sunnyvale. So now we have like, the whole complex has eight, eight-story buildings. So if it's here, then I can work to my company. So in that, I think I welcome office. But I think the problem with office is that once the office is built from first floor up, then it's dead. I mean, it's to the residence, it's belong to the office. So the bad idea is that the first floor, we have some like coffee shops, stuff like that. So the neighborhood still can use. I went to Seattle and one of the office over there is like that. So the second problem, people afraid of office is housing, because there's a law, that stupid law that requires that, how many new houses you will build. So I have not calculated. I don't know how much new houses we need to be built. So if it's one, two thousand, I think we probably can fit another Steven Creek. If it's six or seven thousand, then we need careful consideration. So the second, I would say is that residential. I see there's a conflict between renters and homeowners. I'm a homeowner, by the way. But I think we have a same issue, because I have one house, I have two kids, right? So when they grow up, when they come back, they need a place to live. So I don't think there's a conflict between homeowner and renters. We all need housing. But the problem with this, either of the two, the two plans is that there's no school. Remember two years, two years ago, Major D, they have eight hundred units and they have an elementary school. But now, twenty-seven hundred, twenty-seven, seven something, there's no school. So I just wondering how these kids go to school, right? So I, I mean, the office could bring some traffic issue, but I think for me, I would, I can wait for ten minutes in traffic, but for kids, you cannot wait for ten because they are going to get a late sleep. So if you can pair with school, that'll be good. That's why I don't like both of options. So all this will be overflowed, all these kids will go to college, but college won't be able to fit. But someone told me that there's an elementary school in Westonsay that going down, elementary down, but you cannot bus kids over there, right?
Thank you. You'll need to wrap up your thought.
Oh, man, I have a lot to say. So. So anyway, why, why, in short, why I need, I want, I think these people want affordable housing, they need to oppose this in order to get SB thirty-five. I think compare these two plan, if I have to choose, I will go for SB thirty-five. Why? It has more affordable housing for you guys, right? And it has more space, more green space. It's thirty-eight versus zero point two five, right? And then I also have.
That'll be a good wrap-up. So we have three minutes each, so in the interest of fairness.
Okay, I also have some words, so thank you. I hope we can bridge the gap between them. I see there's a big gap here, like, oh, you are on this side, we are on that, but I think there should be a way to bring together.
Thank you, Feng. Appreciate it. Our next speaker is Pete Heller, who's followed by Jennifer Griffin, who's followed by Jeannie Bradford. Welcome, Pete.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members and staff. Thank you for all your work on this project. Very important work that, as I believe the most, the great majority of the city is very much behind getting Valco built, getting something in place of what we have as nothing right now. So what's important, I think, to think about is that we have to make choices. As adults, we always have to make choices based upon the real options on the table. I mean, I would love to be able to get all the perks from my job without actually having to go to work. But sorry, that option is not on the table. I'd love to have my kids average out to be two perfect kids, but that option isn't on the table here. So what options are on the table? Can you see that? So, thank goodness the council voted in favor of the Tier Two option, because the other option is so much worse. You compare the two, you can see there's almost a hundred million dollars of funding available for, excuse me, community benefits in the Tier Two Plan, as opposed to zero dollars in the SB thirty-five option. And we've definitely heard very nice, and I was moved by the comments from the people with developmentally disabled children, because Tier Two offers housing for those people. SB thirty-five? Sorry, no. And of course, teacher affordable housing is a very critical component of the Tier Two Plan. Again, zero available in SB thirty, SB thirty-five. Sorry, I've got a little allergy today. So clearly, the Tier Two option is the way to go. And for those that are considering battling it through the legal means or through referenda, that is a bad option. That is not the way to bring change to our community. If you want to battle SB thirty-five, that is, has to be dealt with in Sacramento, not in Cupertino. We are a community. We need to get Valco built. We need to move ahead. This is the time to do it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pete. Our next speaker is Jennifer Griffin, followed by Jeannie Bradford, followed by David Meyer. Welcome, Jennifer.
Good evening, City Council. I was out of town for the Wednesday night vote. We left that morning to go to Virginia. I was back there at a family reunion for seven days. And I can tell you, I mean, I was here, I did my time. I was here till one A M. on Tuesday. And we left twenty-four hours to get on a plane to go to Virginia, where there was a tornado that hit Richmond. And my relatives all got flooded in hurricanes, et cetera. So life goes on, the West Coast and the East Coast. But I can tell you, as I was at that reunion, I thought a lot about why we even have a country. You know, you're sitting there in an area that's two hundred, two hundred and fifty years old, and you see things around you where there have been battles, bloody battles that have been fought. The Revolutionary War and the Civil War, and the wounds have not even healed in Virginia. So I thought a lot about why we even have a country and what is going on in California. And I can tell you right now that when I vote in November, I'm going to think very, very carefully of what happened in the last year with all the housing bills and SB thirty-five and SB eight-two-seven, I'm sorry if I got the stupid number mixed up. But I'm going to think about whether we can even trust Sacramento anymore. I'm a native Californian. I owe allegiance to California because I was born here. I could claim a long line of allegiance to Virginia, okay? Yeah, it may sound stupid, but that's my family. That's my problem. But I don't really feel comfortable with some of the things that have happened locally and around San Francisco and Oakland and in Sacramento, because we've never had things like that happen before. We never had any reason to distrust Sacramento. But I will think about those two bills very, very carefully when I am voting in November. And if there is anything that looks suspicious or I don't understand, I am voting no. Okay, getting back to some of the issues. My mother's a little dinky hometown that is two hundred years old, has a Kohl's and a Kmart, and it's smaller than Cupertino. It has malls. It has lots of malls. A lot of the other towns, everywhere we went, there were malls. My sister-in-law's town of Modesto has malls everywhere. Nobody back there was talking about shopping on Amazon. So why, why do corporate people think that everybody in Northern California shops on Amazon? They closed the whole home, I'm sorry, orchard supply chain, which is one of the stupidest corporate decisions that has ever been made. Can you buy a shovel on Amazon? So I'm just saying, let's look at really what's going on with retail. Let's bring it back to Valco so I don't have to drive to Modesto or Santa Cruz or fly to Virginia to buy a shovel. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Our next speaker is Jeannie Bradford, and Jeannie is followed by David Meyer, who's followed by Hemant Buch. Welcome, Jeannie.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Paul and council members. My name is Jeannie Bradford. I'm a thirty-two-year resident of Cupertino. And I came to Cupertino for my career in technology and in particular to work for Apple. And it was a great ride and I've certainly enjoyed the benefits of living here in Cupertino. The community, the schools, my daughter graduated from Cupertino and Fremont Union District High Schools. And of course, my property values have enjoyed the benefit of being in Cupertino. It would be really easy for me to say as a long-term resident, I'd like to sequester myself to those benefits and not extend that to other people. But, you know, I like living in the twenty-first century. And I think that this Valco project is an opportunity to keep Cupertino in the twenty-first century. My whole career's been in technology and if the one lesson I've learned is being relevant is really important. Whether at fifty-nine years old, I'm still employable in the technology industry, Apple's certainly relevant. And I think this is a decision for Cupertino as to whether or not they're going to be, continue to be relevant as we move forward in the twenty-first century. Relevant for our companies, relative for jobs, relative for housing for employees, accelerating the relevance of our schools. And for those of you that know me, an issue that's near and dear to my heart is providing housing and support for those in our community that struggle with hunger and homelessness. This is the right thing to do for Cupertino. It's not an easy thing to do, but it's the right thing to do. And I would urge all of you to support the second reading. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeannie. Our next speaker is David Meyer, followed by Hemant Buch, followed by Kinjol Buch. Welcome, David.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for allowing me to speak after I already missed my time, so thanks. My name is David Meyer. I represent SB at Home, which is an affordable housing advocacy organization that works across Santa Clara County. Last week, the council took a decisive action in support of housing for all at Valco. We know this was a decision that you took lightly. A decision that was taken after many months of community meetings, great work by the city staff, and a lot of engagement and discussions by this council. The project before you contains a significant level of affordability that goes beyond Cupertino's inclusion in resilient ordinance and is a viable alternative to the SB thirty-five project. Twenty percent of homes that will be affordable will reach people of moderate, low, very low, and extremely low incomes, including forty homes for people with developmental disabilities. Let's pass this plan so we can have two potential projects before us that would both go, either one go a long way to addressing Cupertino's role in the regional housing crisis. We're glad that you've made so much progress. We don't want you to stop. In the scope of this regional challenge, housing delayed is housing denied. And our message to you is don't delay. Let's move this project forward and let's pass the specific plan. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Our next speaker is Hemant Buch, followed by Kinjol Buch, followed by Dinesha Tchamansky. Welcome, Hemant.
Hi, how are you guys? I'm Hemant Buch. I'm founder of California Cricket Academy. I think there are a lot of things talked about the advantage of the proposal that was approved last time. And I'm here to support that. And I think that was a fairly emotional, charged-up atmosphere here. And in that, most of you showed, majority of you showed some leadership. And I think today, it's time to show some unity. So I want to urge my friend, you know, Mr. Mayor and others to stay united on a very tough call that you guys made last time and show that, you know, we can do it together, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Hemant. Our next speaker is Kinjol Buch, followed by Dinesha Tchamansky, followed by Stanley Tseng. Welcome, Kinjol.
Hello, council members. I'm here representing as a citizen living in Cupertino for last sixteen, seventeen years now, very close to Valco. I think it's a tough call, but we need to do, move forward with this proposal because not doing anything is now definitely not an option at this point. And why not get benefits for the community? So it's, the decision is not one group versus the other group. It should be what is more beneficial to the city of Cupertino. And in that regards, I would really request you to move forward with the second reading of the Tier Two Plan that was passed two weeks ago at the council chambers. Thank you.
Thank you, Kinjol. Our next speaker is Dinesha Tchamansky, followed by Stanley Tseng, followed by Hung Wei. Welcome, Dinesha.
Good evening, Mayor and council members and staff. My name is Dinesha Tchamansky. I'm a thirty-year resident. I'm really concerned. I think there are a lot of things about the Valco Tier Two Plan that people do not understand in their overlooking. At the September nineteenth council meeting, I heard some contradictions that really concern me. Rod, you had mentioned that, you had said that any city would die for the Class A office that we're getting at Valco because of the huge job multipliers. So statistically, every one job in tech creates about five more. I don't know if people know that. So that means that we get far more than ten thousand new jobs in Cupertino. So where are those people supposed to live and how are we supposed to deal with the traffic and water? Tier Two will also leave a short, I'm not sure if people understand this, Tier Two, Tier Two will leave a short housing for a minimum of three thousand people. And Rod, you said that Valco will bring in housing for teachers and hourly workers, but completely missed the point that only twenty percent of the units will B M R and most teachers won't even qualify for that. You said that Valco will make housing more affordable, but how will a housing shortage bring prices down? When Valco is finished in eight years, the mostly luxury apartments will run out for about seven thousand dollars a month. It's extremely unlikely that the wages of teachers, secretaries, receptionists, wait people, janitors, clerks, and other vital employees that are the backbone of our businesses will increase proportionately. I think you just shot our economy in the foot. Tier Two will also create A B A G violations. We were just mentioning government housing bills. It will put us into a violation that invites the government to step in and take over our housing element and our residents and city council will have no control over where that housing goes. Barry, you mentioned that we only have one big company here and said that you ran into Google and Facebook and they really wanted to locate in Cupertino. Well, they already own land and why would we want them since they won't bring any sales tax? If Apple moves into Valco, like they did at Main Street, ninety percent of Main Street is filled with Apple, by the way, we won't get any additional sales tax from them either and taxpayers will be on the hook for the supporting infrastructure. Barry also mentioned that when our council was invited to the Steve Jobs Theater, that a high-level Apple manager said they were worried about traffic and housing and that they won't be able to recruit or maintain employees. You follow that up by saying only losers see the problems. But I say no, losers ignore the problems and make poor long-term economic and quality of life decisions. Both Rod and Savita had glowing things to say about a performing arts center as a Valco community benefit. Why do we need a second one when we have one at Flint Center already and they can barely keep the place filled?
Thank you, Dinesha. You'll have to finish up.
Why hurt the proceeds of our precious college? Anyhow, nobody studied the viability for that. Taxpayers will have to pay about sixty million dollars to finish the shell and Mount View's performing arts theater is losing money. So let's get real. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Stanley Tseng, followed by Hung Wei, followed by Kevin McClelland. Welcome, Stanley.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. My name's Stanley Tseng. I guess I missed the fireworks two weeks ago here, but when I read it on newspaper, I feel I have obligation to come down here and speak up. I lived in Cupertino for thirty years from nineteen eighty-six to two thousand fifteen. As a longtime resident, I feel where the city is going in terms of providing adequate housing is definitely in the wrong direction. In the past ten to fifteen years, the city's residents have become more vocal in opposing any residential development. It has become a symbol of selfishness when one activist group use extreme measure to resist sensible development, all in the name of self-interest. Cupertino has allowed millions of square feet of office building to be built, namely Apple's spaceship, but has permitted very few for sale of new homes and only a few hundred, for rent apartments for the past ten years. The supply versus demand imbalance is so huge, it drives up home price and rents, not only in Cupertino, but also neighboring cities like Sunnyvale, Westonsay, and Campbell. only in Cupertino, but also in neighboring cities like Sunnyvale, West Alzán, and Campbell. So many employees work for Apple now have to live so far away and commute long distance to get to work, all because Cupertino has not kept up with the demand of housing and building enough housing according to state mandate. The NIMBY group, NIMBY stands for No Not in My Backyard, claims more development will create traffic congestion, crowding schools, and ruining their quality of life. The truth is that when they stifle any development, their home value goes up. That's their true motivation, and this is what I call self-interest expressed to the extreme. And there's only one word to describe it: selfish. If I had employed the same tactics as those NIMBYers back in 1986, when I first moved to Cupertino, I could have blocked many new home developments, including places like Seven Springs. If I were as selfish, many members of that activist group would not even be able to live here in the Cupertino these days. Unfortunately, once they bought a home and settled down, they don't want anyone else to move here. Council members, although you are elected by the residents of Cupertino, you still have the obligation to plan the best for the region with a long-term view. So I encourage you to resist the selfish movement by NIMBYers, allow more homes, apartments to be built. Thank you.
Can you hear us? Okay, good. All right. So our next speaker is Hung Wei, followed by Kevin McClelland. And Kevin is followed by, and I apologize for not being able to read the last name, but it is Ian Green something. So, what's that?
Sides.
Greensides, oh, very good. So, welcome, Hung.
Thank you, Mayor Paul and council members. I'm Hung Wei, 28 residents of Cupertino. I'm here to say I want to congratulate our council members for passing a landmark private and public agreement that brings millions of dollars to our schools and our city, makes our schools and cities stronger. And the best elements in there is inclusive housing. We have housing for seniors, for young professionals, for teachers, public employees, for working families, and for people with disabilities. Cupertino is a welcoming community. And as Oren said, I'm also working the precinct. I just came back from working precincts. And when we talked to residents, they all said it's time to move Valco forward. But specific plan has all the benefits, inclusive housing. It also still has a chance for people to do the design process, collaborate, and make Cupertino the best place that we could be for our youth, for our next generation to come. As a school member for 11 years, we, as a community, can be proud to say we educate our youth to be imaginative, innovative, to meet up the challenges. As a community, let's meet up the challenges. Let's make Valco mitigate all the concerns that people are concerned. Give the neighborhood the best mitigation, mitigate traffic, use innovative skills. I would like to personally call. I believe better Cupertino people have the best intention in mind. They have different visions, but we are in a course for a Valco that's going to move forward. Let's work together. And I have a petition at change.org. It's inclusive and collaborative Cupertino. I'm calling everyone, let's work together. Let's not have reverendence and lawsuits. Let's not waste our taxpayers' money. Let's not repeat Measure C and D. Let's move forward with collaboration and make the Valco our one of our best, best, best thing we can happen. And, you know, we educate our kids, and let's invite our kids. This project is for the next generation. I'm not going to be here for another 40 years. Hopefully, modern technology will make me live longer, but we are building something that's going to last another 60, 80 years. It's not for us, it's for our next generations to come. Let's invite them to be part of making Valco to be the most innovative, the most imaginative, the best place for all the families who want to come, for all of us to be there. So, let's do it together. Visit change.org and Google, no reverendence, no lawsuit, sign the petition, show Cupertino, show the residents that we want to move forward collaboratively. Invite everyone to be on the table. We still have the time to do all the designs and can mitigate all the issues. Let's meet up the challenge. Let's solve, be problem solvers, and not to look back, say, let's stand still. Standing still is not an option for Cupertino. Thank you.
Thank you, Hung. Our next speaker is Kevin McClelland, and Kevin is followed by Ian Greensides, who is followed by Liang Chow. Welcome, Kevin.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Kevin McClelland, and she's a hard act to follow. That was amazing. She might think about running for higher office. As many of you know, I started working at Valco over 30 years ago, over 35 years ago now. And so I've been a part of the conversation as to what should happen at Valco for much longer than the last four years that we've been facing the current issues. Although I do respect the fact that over the last four years, we've had our best chance to really get something done, which wasn't able to be a part of the conversations before then. One of the things that I really want to echo what Hung Wei said is just really applauding making a decision. I know it's not easy. I know that there have been a lot of ideas floated around, and it's taken a lot of really good leadership to get us this far. And it's probably going to take some great leadership to continue to move us forward. But just really want to thank you for starting that process of turning a vacant space into a gem. And I think most of the citizens of Cupertino want to see something happen there sooner than later, and would like to be able to use it instead of look at it. So really thank you for all that you're doing, and please keep it going. Thanks.
Thanks, Kevin. Our next speaker is Ian Greensides, followed by Liang Chow, followed by Lisa Warren. Welcome, Ian.
Thank you. Hello? Hi, my name's Ian Greensides. This is my son Jacob. We moved from Pleasant Hill to Cupertino's area six years ago for special ed services for one of my children, who's 14 now. And the reason we knew about Cupertino is because my wife was recruited from the Philippines to come teach in Cupertino. And when she married someone with four children, and was, we just decided to move here because it was easier to get special ed services here. She was commuting from Concord after we had met because of the cost of housing here. We know a lot of teachers who used to teach in Cupertino. Almost every one of those teachers recruited from the Philippines eight or nine years ago has left the district. They can't afford to live here. Teachers at my daughter's middle school at Lawson leave in the middle of the year because the rent went up $1,000. And so for those who are opposing the project, I think we need to ask ourselves, why do we not want to make room for our teachers and who are providing the world-class education? I'm an attorney, and even on both incomes, we couldn't afford to buy a home in Cupertino when the average home is between $1.5 or $2 or $3 million for a rancher. The Apple Spaceship building was visionary and beautiful. Valco's project is visionary. What if we were to create a building that looks like the Apple Spaceship that provided 15,000 homes? I think we need to think of solutions rather than problems. And the time, there is room in Cupertino for everyone if we decide to make room for them. So I encourage the city council to continue on the path to support the Valco project. The SB 35 legislation was visionary and needed because of the NIMBY movement, and let's create a YIMBY movement, yes, in my backyard. Let's let Cupertino known for being visionary, rather than being in the national news sources for denying the housing crisis and for claims at city council meetings of folks not wanting the average income to drop below $175,000. Elitism is just another form of racism, and we need to make space for everyone in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ian. Our next speaker is Liang Chow, followed by Lisa Warren. Welcome, Liang. And Lisa's is the last speaker card that I have.
Hi, Mayor Paul and council members. This project will add enough office for 10,000 more workers looking for housing and 2,668 units, up to 14 stories tall, with no real park and no school, even though it will likely generate 1,000 students. As far as I know, oh, by the way, I'm on the Cupertino Union School Board, but I'm speaking as myself today. As far as I know, the city has not notified the school district after you have decided to increase the housing units from 800 to 2,400, and now 2,600. The city has not involved anyone from the school district in the negotiation of the community benefit package. We all know that families care about schools most in Cupertino, yet you have managed to hold the school district hostage in your benefit package. If any subcontractor sues Sand Hill, you will take away $5 million from schools, not from your empty shell city hall, not from your empty shell performing arts center, from schools. Let's not look at the millions we will get. Let's look at the millions that we will have to spend. We will have to spend at least 50 millions for facilities for Cupertino Union School, more for Fremont High School. Fremont High School is now, now have a bond major for renovating classrooms because they use the last bond major to add new classrooms to Cupertino High School. How about, let's not just look at the housing for, for the few hundred housing that might be added that might be affordable for teachers. How about the 1,700 teachers who currently commute to Cupertino through the traffic congestion? Their commute time has doubled in the past few years. They would not possibly move, move to Valco shopping mall. However, before anything can happen, their commute time will likely double again. How about all the other current workers who currently work in Cupertino? Their commute time will double because transit will not happen in the next 10 or 20 years. And Cupertino is a transit desert. We have only two bus lines. Please consider all of the people who currently work in Cupertino. Thank you.
Thank you, Liang. Our next and final speaker card is from Lisa Warren. Welcome, Lisa.
Thank you. So, there's a lot of buzzwords, and there's a lot of numbers games going on. Buzzwords, let me just rip them off for a minute. Housing crisis, imbalance, market rate, low income, normal planning process, warm shelves, development agreement. So, housing crisis main challenge lies with the imbalance of jobs and housing. That's, I don't think there's anybody here that would argue with that. Yet Tier Two exasperates the crisis by exasperating that imbalance. It's frustrating to witness people I've never seen in this chambers before speak as if they followed this for the last four to 10 years. And it feels the marketing is working, but I envision these people being extremely disappointed if they even still live here in the 10-plus years that this will take to build. Market rate is a moving target. Therefore, BMR, below market rate, is a moving target. You can't base numbers now on what will happen in 10 years or such before people can move into any of these units. The same is the case for moderate income, low income, very low income, and extremely low income. And I want to preface this next statement by saying I am all for housing for developmentally disabled and any disabled people and assistance for that housing. You have a developer, Sand Hill Property Company, who has been planning the purchase and development of this project for at least a decade. Never until the time between the Planning Commission meeting and the first city council meeting two weeks ago, never did that developer offer that type and level of housing. I believe that if the Planning Commission hadn't brought it up and put it in their request for amendments to altering what was being put forth to the city council, you never would have seen it. Suddenly, in that two-week period, Sand Hill pops in with their 40 units. It's not something you can count on from these people, and I'm really sorry. Plus, I have friends with development, children, young and older, with disabilities, and I spoke to two out of the ones I know. And this is not the environment they would want that housing in. 14, 15-story buildings? So it's not even the right place. Warm shelves? Okay, let me get this out before my time is up. If any approved plan of any kind and any development agreement is not structured in a way that our city has control of phasing, occupancy, completion bond, and mitigations, we're in deep trouble. And I don't see that in the language that we have before you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
All right. So we'll bring it back up to council. We'll close off the public commentary. And would anyone like to start with any follow-ups? There's a suggestion for a break. Does anyone else like to take a few minutes? All right, so it is approximately 8:30. We'll reconvene in five minutes, 8:35. Item number thirteen. We have taken in public input. We've heard the staff report, and we're back up on the dais for any further council deliberation as well as entertaining motions related to the items. Would anyone like to kick us off with regard to follow-up questions or deliberation or placement of proposed motions on the, on the dais for what I presume will be discussion purposes?
I move.
Okay, Councilmember Chang.
Oh, we need to have a second reading by the.
Are you ready?
By the clerk, yeah, go ahead.
Am I doing one at a time? Okay, this is the second reading of ordinance number eighteen dash two-one-seven-seven, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Cupertino amending the municipal code to allow adoption and implementation of Valco Town Center specific plan.
I move that ordinance number eighteen dash two-one-seven-seven be read by title only and that the city clerk's reading constitute the second reading thereof.
And is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Councilmember Chang motions and Vice Mayor Singh's seconds. Would anyone care to have a discussion?
Can we have discussion or are we just going to vote without discussion?
No, no, we have the discussion. After that, we discuss.
So we'll take the items, shall we take them one at a time?
We take all of them, then we discuss.
And then we'll discuss in batch? Okay, very good.
Second one, second ordinance.
This is the second reading of ordinance number eighteen dash two-one-seven-eight, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Cupertino rezoning the parcels within the Valco special area.
I move that the ordinance number eighteen dash two-one-seven-eight be read by title only and that the city clerk's reading constitute the second reading thereof.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
Number three.
And this is the second reading of ordinance number eighteen dash two-one-seven-nine, ordinance of the city council of the city of Cupertino approving a development agreement by and between the city of Cupertino and Valco property owner LLC for the development of Valco Town Center.
I move that ordinance number eighteen dash two-one-seven-nine be read by title only and that the city clerk's reading constitute the second reading thereof.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so we have all three of the ordinances on the table with regard to proposed motion, and we have seconds. Madam City Clerk, if you could turn off our voting lights, it's a bit distracting.
All right, so I have some follow-up question I want to ask because there are.
Very good. Councilmember Chang.
Ms. Liang Fan Chow is accusing the city not contacting the school district. So I want to ask three people here. One is our city manager. Did we not contact in the school district?
In late July, I had a meeting with Dr. Baker in my office to talk about the Valco and encouraging him to have a conversation with the developer. I informed him that we are moving forward with the negotiation with the developer. And I had also asked him to let us know what he, what CUSD has done. I had similar conversation with the high school district, with Dr. Boffey, and so I have not had conversation with him since then, but the community benefits between the schools are between schools and developer, and the city's not involved in that process.
Okay. Yeah, Vice Mayor, you want to add something?
Yeah, I will add that long before Amy joined, the city is our interim city manager, and soon after Dr. Craig Baker started, I reached out to him. He needed a couple of months to get his bearing and meet with his primary stakeholders. But November, I did sit down with him for a forty-five-minute meeting, and I talked to him about what had transpired on Valco and the fact that there were, the project was coming back in the form of a specific plan and that it was important for him to get together with his school board and decide what community benefits he might negotiate for. I know, frankly, right, the subject of community benefits over time has been controversial, and one of his board members, in fact, Liang, who was up here tonight, had previously called it a bribe. So I know that there, there's been some consternation at CUSD about how to handle this, this, and, but certainly I, I had that forty-five-minute meeting with him and explained to him from my perspective what had happened in the past, what was going to happen going forward, and I had another conversation with him while we were conducting the charrette, suggesting that it was really time for CUSD to engage. Thank you.
Sure. Since high school student and then Polly is here, Polly, can you come up here and say, did we contact you? I just want to make clear that the public get the right information because there's a lot of fake news spreading around, and I don't want this to have any.
City manager Amy did indeed contact us and, contact me, and I had a lengthy meeting with her. We had been talking for some time about the idea of putting adult ed at Valco, and that option was quite exciting to us. I think some of the questions were about some of the technical contacts, am I correct about that? And Christine Mallory, my CBOs here, and Graham Clark, our superintendent, happens to be here as well. So Christine, do you mind joining me and talking about that? Can I, is that what you're asking? I just want to be sure.
Yes, I've received all of the information from the city, and I've received the EIR and all of the notifications, all the public hearings. I'm on the mailing list, and so I receive all of this information on a regular basis.
So the school district got notification from the city all the time, early in the stage?
Yes, we got notified early in the stage, and in fact, we did receive the EIR on a CD, right when it was, right when it came out.
All right. Second question, you, you want to add something?
No, I was.
No, I mean, you, the guy, I'm forgot, I don't know your name, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just want to say we have been working with the city with the adult ed moving to adult, well, moving to Valco, and that's been a critical part of our construction plan. And they moved there, and it's, it's critical to what we're doing at the educational options reconstruction. So we're happy that you've allowed us to do that, and we will, it's temporary housing for us, but we, we hope it can be a long-term arrangement.
So that's for adult education?
Yes.
How many student in adult education you?
About eleven thousand, actually.
Eleven thousand?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, great. That, that information is very helpful. The other, the other part is Mr. and Ms. Liang Fan Chow is acute, saying that there will be one thousand student. But based on my calculation, if it's point one seven at the CUSD, twenty-seven-hundred unit, you're talking about four-hundred-and-fifty-nine student. How many student this would be?
Yeah, I can't exactly speak to CUSD, although it is part of our demographic reports that we get from the same demographer that we share. But I can speak to Fremont Union High School District, and our estimates is, are around a hundred and seventy students.
Hundred and seventy student?
Correct.
So a hundred and seventy plus four-fifty, four-sixty, you're talking about seven hundred?
Yeah, I can't speak to the total number.
Okay, understand, understand.
But because of the nature of the units, we will not be generating very many high school students, and we have looked at things like BMR and, and some of the newer trends, and we watch that sort of thing very carefully. So I think it's based on the kind of housing we're hearing about, and that's the basis for that number.
Sure. Then the decline, is there a?
Would you like me to change my number?
No, I'm not, I'm not asking you, sorry. Okay, then me.
Do you want to change my number?
Let me, let me finish.
You can ask me directly.
Mayor, please keep the order. Let me ask you, the increase of the student would not create problem for the school or is actually helping the school district?
Well, in our case, I think somebody said earlier tonight, this is going to take a while to build. We are anticipating a down, decline in enrollment. We're leveled off about now, and the decline is about to happen. A fluctuation of two hundred students is not a significant number for us, so let's assume it's two hundred. So we're absolutely ready for that, and that's been the plan all along, is to build our schools to allow for the kind of fluctuation that happens naturally with enrollment in a lot of ways. Sometimes it's housing turnover, sometimes it's development, but that's the whole plan we have behind our housing. And I do, I do want to say, it is true, we've built some new classrooms. That's partially because some of our classrooms were almost a hundred years old, and that is how we have spent some of the bond measure, and the new bond measure that we're planning is to renovate the remainder of the classrooms. And the speed at which we had to build them, that was changed a little bit by enrollment. But honestly, all of our schools are over fifty years old. They have all needed renovation, and we've been systematically organized, working on that project the whole time. So this new measure that's on the ballot in November really is to complete the project that we started in two thousand and eight, to bring our schools up to the standard that they need to be, both for safety and for education.
So what is the major number? Major J?
Major CC.
C, okay.
Thank you.
So that one, that one, you don't need another school, right?
We will not need additional classrooms. We anticipate that kind of ebb and flow in enrollment.
Okay, great. Thank you, appreciate.
Any further comments or questions? I see either Vice Mayor Singh or Councilmember Sharp. Vice Mayor Singh.
The elder statesman. So I heard it said that, one, one comment we heard from Lisa Warren near the end, they wouldn't have offered housing for development disabled if not for the Planning Commission. Well, you know, it is true. At the end of a process, people negotiate. I personally know Savita behind the scenes. She and I, under the Brown Act, got to work together on this, and she was pushing me and saying, I need to get this development disabled housing in. And so among the three of us that voted for this plan, right, it was, there was a fine ballot struck with the things we were all advocating for, and we spent many a late night talking about, you know, what we thought our residents would most appreciate. And having the very robust participation of the development disabled community, Savita was able to convince us that that had to be in. So you can thank her for that. And now I will make some general comments. I guess the other comment I heard was a number that was not the school, in the school report about a school, of the student generation rate. You know, as we've been through all of this, I have to say, I've been, my thinking has been critically influenced by the experts that come and talk to us about all these things. And I think it's very important, if we're trying to be fact-based, that we bring in the best people we can that are independent of the developer in every area, and we listen to them. We can certainly quiz them, we can ask them if there's an error, or there's an issue, or how about this or that, but at the end of the day, I certainly rely heavily on what I hear from experts in every area that really have domain expertise. I'm, I'm trained as an engineer, you know, I can do differential equations, and at one time I could tell you how light is generated, starting from Maxwell's equations, but quite frankly, right, in this domain, none of us up here is actually a domain expert. And so we rely on these people that have done this in and out for decades to, to give us the best advice, whether it's legal advice or advice about retail, or school demographics, or school generation rate. So I just wanted to, to say that. You know, for the past two decades, Valco's been on a slow decline, and the mall was in the hands of four developers during that period. We know that the folks that owned Valley Fair Westfield were thinking about a mixed-use project back in nineteen ninety-one. They subsequently determined that Valley Fair was a better location. They did not move forward, and they decided to invest there, and they did so at the right time. And because of the fact that it's on two major crossroads, better location, investment at the right time, and frankly, being very savvy mall owners, they, they won, right? Santana Road came in next to it reinforcing retail. Retail wants to be near other good retail. And I sympathize with Jennifer Griffin, who comes and talks to us about all those stories she wants to shop at. You know, I do too sometimes. I, I may have bought this at JCPenney, that doesn't exist anymore, right, Jennifer? And so we're all having to readjust to change that comes down, and, and I appreciate that that's challenging. But council members now, for two decades, have gone around the city saying they want to get something done at Valco. And frankly, with four different owners, there were lots of botched attempts, putting the theater on top, in the end, it didn't work. And, and. And, and we're frankly in a very fortunate position, because with all of the, these four big parcels consolidated, under one ownership, we can actually move forward with a big project that's integrated and gives us the value that we hope the community appreciates in the end. And council members for the twenty years before I got on could only dream about this opportunity. So I am proud to support the specific plan for Valco, and the local process, the process that we've been through most recently goes back six years. And unlike the prior project called The Hills, that project never made it through the whole city review process in twenty sixteen due to the competing referendums, C and D. And I frankly consider referendums the wrong process for us to make a decision, critical and complex land use decision. This plan has the right process, it's been a robust process. Now we've heard, as I said before, from independent experts on retail, what was reasonable for us to get on retail? We've heard from school demographers, we've heard about school impact from experts, we've heard about environmental impact for experts, and yes, to somebody's point, there is some impact during the construction phase. And there's also mitigation for that, that agencies such as the one I serve on, the Air District, require when we do construction anywhere in the Bay Area. Critically, we've also heard from an economic expert, who has worked up an analysis to help us ensure the project is both feasible to build, if it isn't feasible for the developer, it isn't going to get done. So we can talk about it only penciling out for the city, but if it doesn't pencil out for, it takes two to tango, if it doesn't pencil out for the developer, nothing's going to happen. So it has to be feasible to build, factoring in all the risks that happen over the long term of its construction and life, especially if you're, if you're leasing space, right? If you're counting on a payback over thirty years, it takes a while, and through a bunch of economic cycles to know how you come out there. We have also determined, through this economic analysis, that we are not leaving lots of money on the table. We have a rich set of community benefits, and we, we understand that this project is feasible, but we're not leaving a lot of money on the table. So this is the right plan, in my view, to move forward with Valco now, with housing for all income levels, including, and plus the major community benefits for our city and our schools. So finally, I would urge residents, all of us, to think very carefully before supporting any referendum to overturn the plan. Because if that overturn happens, we will most likely get the project that's been submitted under the new state law called SB thirty-five. It's a much taller project, with towers that go up to two hundred and forty feet, and as I said last time, the view shed from the neighborhood immediately to the west would really be greatly impacted by that project. It's a project, the SB thirty-five project is a project with less housing and more office than is in our specific plan. There are no required traffic mitigations, because there's no CEQA, and there are none of the community benefits. So, I hope the community, as, as Hung Way eloquently said, can figure out how we work together to make the, the project that comes in, that reports to the specific plan, the best it can be for all of our residents. So there's a lot of work left to do. There's the design, there's getting more detailed on which uses go where, listening to preferences on everything from retail to community benefits, the sort of things that might happen with a theater that we could imagine. So I'm excited in, to move to this next phase, and tonight begins that process. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Singh, and Councilmember Scharf.
Sure, I'm ready to start. First, I wanted to point out that on the city's website and the registrar of voters' website, our results of previous elections are available. Say that just because one, one speaker was not correct in what she stated, I'm not going to go in further on that. So, I was just in China, visiting one of our friendship cities, and I explained, and I apologize, oh, Mayor Paul couldn't make it, because he's in the middle of a reelection campaign, and one of our hosts told me, well, we don't have that issue here, we don't have elections. So I wanted to point out what, that in two, so I started thinking, in two thousand six, for anyone who was here, voters overturned two ordinances with referendums, measure D and E back then. Measure D was a rezoning ordinance that would have converted part of the land at Valco to housing, and all of the land remains, and measure E was all of the land where Main Street now sits would have been housing. And then ten years later, in twenty sixteen, voters rejected another measure D, which would have approved The Hills at Valco, and would have exempted it from approvals from the planning commission, the city council, and CEQA. And I thought, wow, this is great, because unlike China, we do have elections. But then I thought, do the elections really matter? Because how many times are we going to actually vote on the same issue? Isn't it clear by now what the vast majority of residents want and don't want on the Valco parcel? So, and I would like to point out, several speakers pointed out the need for more housing because of so much office space. And I'm very confused as to why they believe that greatly worsening our jobs-to-housing ratio, as Tier Two does, would somehow bring housing prices down, make housing more affordable, because it doesn't do that. It raises rents, it increases home prices, if it's for-sale housing, and it actually forces out teachers, firefighters, nurses, law enforcement, the very people we are trying to bring into the city. But I did agree with Hung Way. We should collaborate to make Valco the best we can. To do so, we have to look at what is best for the next generation, as well as the current generation, make it imaginative and innovative. And we have the opportunity to do that. I was thrilled that she said that, and that obviously she is no, no longer in favor of Tier Two, she wants to bring it back, so we can collaborate to create a Valco that we can all be proud of, and I'm thrilled of, of that. And I'd also like to point out to my honorable colleague, he mentioned referendums in twenty sixteen, actually, there were no referendums in twenty sixteen. What there were in twenty sixteen were two initiatives, and they're very different. An initiative creates a new law, a referendum simply overturns a law that the majority of people don't like. And the planning commission member, Jeff Paulson, he was spot-on. He said, we should respect the democratic process. And like it or not, part of the democratic process in California is initiative, initiatives and referendums. And I don't see how anyone could possibly be opposed to the democratic process. No one is going to be forced to sign a referendum petition, and no one's going to be forced to vote to overturn something that they don't like. If the residents collect enough signatures to put it on the ballot, so be it, that's what our democratic process allows for. And I know there's been a lot of efforts to thwart the democratic process. Last week, three city council members had been meeting, a non-publicized meeting, with members of the development community present, to try to strategize to avoid referendums. They're well aware how residents feel about their votes, and simply want to prevent referendums from ever appearing on the ballot. Is that what Cupertino has become? Secret meetings to plan on how to subvert democracy? Are we going to become like China with no, with no elections and no democracy? I mean, this is like what's transpiring now in Washington DC with hearings on the Supreme Court. I mean, we're demanding expedited approval for specific reasons. So last week, no, it was this week, on Monday, I was walking across Library Field, and some guy was throwing a ball for his dog, and he stops me and says, when can I sign the referendum petition? And I said, well, you know, I don't know, look at the website, it's not, it's not time yet. And, I mean, this is someone, he wasn't recruited to speak at the meeting, he wasn't sent an email with talking points to retransmit to the council. I've never seen so many emails that are exactly the same as I saw in the past few days. Then someone ran up to me on my street, said, we're going to be out of town for five weeks, how can we sign the referendum petition? And I said, well, I don't know when it's coming forward, you know, I'm not the one organizing it, so I just can't tell you that. So I think what is true is we often see the initiative system abused in California. Not so much referendums, but initiatives. So what we see is an entity can spend an enormous amount of money in an effort to bypass planners, legislators, and environmental laws, in an effort to profit enormously at the expense of resident schools and the environment. We saw this in Cupertino in twenty sixteen, we were fortunate that a majority of residents had the critical thinking skills to not be misled by the slick brochures and artist renderings. I also agree, a previous speaker said it would be a shame to lose out on community benefits. And the way to do this is simple, we craft a specific plan and a development agreement that takes into account the views of residents, and that would minimize impact to the schools, and that would not cause excessive traffic congestion, and would not worsen too much our jobs-to-housing ratio. So, I don't know if referendums are going to move forward, but I would say, if they do, the responsibility for losing some of the community benefits is not with those of us that voted against it, it's those that refuse to work to craft a specific plan that we could all collaborate on and agree with. So spending the time to do what's right is not in the cards, apparently. We sit up here, we, we complain about corruption in Washington, and we rail against Donald Trump, but the fact is, the corruption flows all the way down from the state, county, and city level. And then SB thirty-five, the thousand-pound gorilla. We know that the economic analysis didn't include SB thirty-five, other than to say it's not likely that that would ever pencil out. And yet, some people have been here saying, the choice is clear, it's either SB thirty-five or Tier Two, there's no other choice, and that is clearly not true. We have the opportunity to craft a one-point-five, one-point-seven-five, one-point-two-five, whatever number you want to use, we have that opportunity, it's not too late, and I, and I hope we don't blow it. Then there's the schools, we've seen the demographer reports, so I went back and looked previous demographer reports to see how far off they were, because I recall going to my kid's school once, and the principal profusely apologizing, she said, we didn't expect this many students, they told us there would only be twenty students from these three hundred housing units, and instead, we have seventy, and we're putting in more portables, don't worry, we'll be able to house all the students. So, when you look at the demographer reports, I know people call them experts, but be very wary. You know, are they taking into account the difference between BMR and non-BMR, between for-sale and rental, between small and large units, between single-family and multifamily? Because the numbers that I calculated based on prior projects throughout the city were quite a bit higher than what was presented here by the so-called experts. So what do we do? If we want to craft a good, a good specific plan, we want to have the school impact minimized, we want minimized traffic congestion added, we really want to ensure that the development agreement states clearly that the project will have a phasing, and it will be built in an order, so we're sure we get the housing before the office. We want to ensure we have a large section of retail, not just restaurants, and as was pointed out by the mayor last two weeks ago, Tier Two leaves an enormous amount of money on the table, money that we could negotiate for better community benefits. And of course, we want to ensure that the property owner gains sufficient profit, and that's really all we have with Tier Two right now, is to enable the property owner to gain sufficient profit. Okay, finally, I'm done, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Scharf, Councilmember Vaidhyanathan.
I'm sorry, before you do, Councilmember, for the benefit of the public and this council, both the district attorney's office and my office reviewed the Brown Act issue related to three councilmembers attending a public meeting. It was a public meeting, it was open, it was publicized pursuant to the statute, there was absolutely no Brown Act violation.
I would take, I would take strong issue with that, it was not publicized, it was not open to the public, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember, I'm not going to be discussing the issue in public, that has been a determination, determination made by my office and the district attorney's office. I do respect your difference of opinion.
I want to interject, okay, I mean, I, I hope when we accusing President Donald Trump was lying four thousand times, I hope this council don't lie, okay? Don't put the, don't put up the fake news. The district attorney say it's, it's, it's not a private meeting, it's a press conference, it's a, it's a public meeting, there's seventy-eight people attending, besides the three council member, and then Councilmember Sharp was also, also attending outside, have another fifteen better Cupertino people there, and how can you say it's a secret meeting? I mean, you were there, and then you accusing us, and I don't, I don't really appreciate it, okay? Putting the word, and then just lying to the public, it's not good, it's not a good policy, okay? It's not bad for this, for the state, for the federal.
Barry, could I just suggest to you that the city attorney has clearly refuted...
I know, I know, but I just need to get out of my chest, because this really bothers me a lot, okay? Someone keep lying, and then put up the fake news. And then he also mentioned about Hung Way want, don't want a Tier Two, Hung, he will come up since you're still here. You really don't want a Tier Two, that's, that's Councilmember Steve Sharp say, say you don't want a Tier Two.
I think the public comment's over, isn't it?
No, I'm, this my, my, my time for the comment, I want to clarify.
Since I was told by Councilmember Stephen Sharp that I no longer support Tier Two Valco-specific plan, I would like to make it very clear, I think our councilmember make a landmark decision on approving Valco-specific plan on Tier Two, and all the other development projects in Central Valley should follow that. It gives, makes our city stronger, make our schools stronger, I support Tier Two Valco-specific plan, what I meant is, let's invite our youth, let's invite all the good intention, even including better Cupertino people, to read, to design this very good project, make it innovative, make it imaginative, make it best place that Cupertino would enjoy.
I appreciate that, but I do...
So I'd like to correct that on the record, please.
We have closed the public hearing.
All right, thank you.
Okay, I'd like to give our councilmembers that haven't spoken an opportunity to speak as well, and so I thank you for your allowance of us to finish off our remarks. Councilmember Vaidhyanathan.
Thank you, Mayor. A lot has been spoken in the last two weeks, and I spoke in detail two weeks ago. I don't want to rehash all those comments. We have analyzed SB thirty-five, we have analyzed Tier Two, we have compared them. A speaker put a chart up there, saying what you get with Tier Two, what you don't get with SB thirty-five. Councilmembers here can object to that, or they can say SB thirty-five will never happen. We are not the developer, the developer believes that they can build SB thirty-five. So my opinion here is, we build what we think will bring the best community benefits for our community, the community that we live in, the community that elected us, that told us, you have to take care of our children, those who cannot take care of themselves, those who are vulnerable, our schools, and also bring us some benefits that relieve us from traffic, and also do something for fun, and in the, in the interim, also take care of your own employees. That's what we are looking for. We are looking for benefits for both the school districts, we are looking for benefits for the arts community, we are looking for benefits for transit, whether it's near-term solutions like shuttle services, and all those things that have been detailed before, and long-term solutions which happen slowly. And of course, we are also looking at, at doing a, a city hall that won't fall like a pile of cards in an earthquake. These are things we are getting with the Tier Two plan. I don't want to go over these again and again, and then compare it to what we are not getting in SB thirty-five, we are getting something in SB thirty-five, zero, nothing. The developer gets to build, it does not come to city council. Please, I think the public needs to know that, it does not come to city council, so please don't come and tell us this is not happening with SB thirty-five. We have no control, our hands are tied, it is a ministerial staff administrative process. I would just like to say something about what Vice Mayor Singh said about the disadvantaged disabled children. I worked with him on it, and I only worked with him on it, I did not work with Barry on it. And Barry, if you could please confirm that.
Sure, confirm.
Thank you. So, and I'm allowed to work with... So, and I'm allowed to work with at least one other councilmember on any proposal. And I've been saying that since June. It didn't come up in the last two weeks. Those parents have been coming to each and every meeting of ours. You saw the children today. How can you not involve them in our community? How can it not be an inclusive community? They are our community. We need to have them here. And I've been talking about multi-generational communities forever. The youth and the seniors need to live together. I spoke to a driver of ride just about three, four weeks ago, and he was a student, and said, "I enjoy driving the seniors, because I get to learn from them." The youth who were here before, and they probably have a curfew, and they all left, I spoke to them right after the study session. Some of them said, "Yes, we would like to be back here in Cupertino, we would love to have housing for us." And all of them said, "We love our teachers, please house our teachers. We love our teacher who sends us here to this meeting, so we learn." They love their teachers, and they want to see their teachers here. Those are the people we are doing the Tier 2 specific plan for. We cannot be a closed-gate community, we need to be an inclusive community. And I really, really am very upset with the comments about corruption. My contributions are on the city's website, the contributions to my campaign. Please look them up, and tell me if there's any corruption there. I really don't like these insinuations. It's all out for everyone to see. Go to Cupertino.org and see where the campaign statements are. I didn't want to go into this much detail, I wanted to keep my comments short, but it just was a little too much for me to just keep quiet. These were, I just want to end with a few things. The Tier 2 Valco specific plan is the only way to move forward. It is necessary, and it's for the good of our community. At this point, I want to take some liberty with some quotes that popular people have spoken over centuries. I won't name them, I think you will know whom I'm speaking about. The very first one is from the father of the nation, of the country of my origin. It is his birth anniversary today, on October 2nd, and he said, "Be the change you want to see in the world." Then from the founding father of, one of the founding fathers of our country, now immortalized in a musical. "I want to build something that's gonna outlive me. What do you want?" And then, from the founding father of New Age Cupertino, who put Cupertino on the map with this. "We are here to put a dent in the universe. Otherwise, why else even be here? So thank you for giving me the opportunity to make a dent, to change my world, that will outlive you and me." Thank you.
Great. Thanks very much. So our councilmembers have spoken, and I'll keep my remarks very brief. With regard to the basic calculus here, I still find it very difficult to reconcile the creation of the jobs with the amount of housing being delivered. And so it's a very simple inquiry. If we're creating space that creates 8,000 jobs, and you have a good jobs-to-housing ratio of 3 to 2, we're delivering 2,400 units of housing, what do we do with that delta? What do we do with that 3,000 or so units of housing? And this is especially difficult for me to reconcile when we have a set of state housing laws that are supposed to be invoked in order to help correct that housing crisis. So nothing that I've heard in this process really changes that, frankly. I think that it is perfectly legitimate for a majority of our council to have a preference. And so as the selected mayor for this year, I do see it as my duty to effectuate the will of that majority. So with regard to one of the items that I think is actually a very beneficial thing in terms of introducing it to our community, a couple of years ago, almost a couple of years ago now, there was a representative from one of the nonprofit housing organizations in our area that had to do with the developmentally disabled units. And we met at one of the functions, it was actually at Main Street Cupertino, and I was able to introduce her to one of the developer representatives at that time. And I want to just express appreciation for the developer in terms of making sure that we do have those 40 units of extremely low-income housing units in Tier 2. One of the other representatives reached out to me in this last week to make sure that that language was reflected in the development agreement. And as part of my duties as mayor, I sign resolutions, I sign ordinances, and prior to the signatures being applied to the resolutions that we recently passed two weeks ago, there were modifications to the development agreement that had to do with those extremely low-income units. And I will follow up by saying, another one of those questions in the phone call that I had this past week had to do with whether those ELI units are specifically dedicated to people with developmental disabilities. So I would like to really encourage the developer to make sure that those do get allocated to people with developmental disabilities, because as written, it expresses an option. It expresses an option for the developer to allocate for that particular usage. And so I applaud it. I think it's an excellent addition to have to this particular project. I will abide by the will of the majority, especially in this particular role. But I do fundamentally have some issues with the imbalance that we are creating with regard to the need for more housing. And I just find it very difficult to justify under the rubric of requirements that are supposedly improving that situation. So that's the set of my sentiments. With regard to the economic analysis, I was going to go into the particular numbers that we were running. I would encourage in the future, if we're looking at other developments, and we had a similar kind of situation, that we should run those numbers at the outset, so that we have a commonly understood sense of what our bargaining position is. But I'll leave it at that. And with regard to the motion that's now on the table, we've all had an opportunity to speak our piece. I would suggest...
I just asked a question. I did not get a chance to say what I want to say in my deliberation, so I want to say a few words. As I said before, change is not easy. And in the universe, the constant, the change is the only constant. Okay, so I would like to see this community change from NIMBY attitude to IMBY attitude. This is one of the speakers say, "That's very good." I mean, change it to, yes, in my backyard, because all inclusive is very important for a good society, harmony together. The way we are working here on these tiles, and also this country, in my opinion, is not the right thing to do. Imply the corruption, implies that it's not democracy, you cannot ask people not to sign a petition, that's not democracy. I cannot believe it. Democracy, you can ask people to vote or not to vote. You look at the Supreme Court nomination, you have people support, the judge nomination, you have people against it. And then so, for better Cupertino, for councilmember Sharp say, "Sign the petition, fine," you know, but then those are not asking not to sign, it's against democracy. Come on, don't tell me that. That's not democracy. I know much better than you are. You were born here, and you say it this way. I really cannot believe it. And then imply the corruption, and put the word on people's mouths, you know, many times. Don't do that. I mean, just state the fact, tell the people, and then let people make a decision. I'm not saying you cannot have, we cannot have the different opinion, but don't just make it up. Just say the right thing, do the right thing, and tell the fact, the truth. Don't just keep lying on it, okay? Which is very bad. As I said before, also, the loser are always looking for problems in every solution, and winner is looking for solutions from every problem. So this city is in a crossroad. The people have to decide, it's not on this council. Council already decided there will be a referendum. I already know the referendum is out there spreading. Someone told me 350 people signed it as of last Monday. But it's up to you, the resident of Cupertino, this is in the crossroad. You want to make this city a nice city?
Yeah, you could vote with us, man. Oh, we could vote.
They'll have to be like the Orangers of old.
All right. Can you get here? Yeah. So this, we are at the crossroad. If people ask you to sign a petition for referendum, you make a decision yourself. My suggestion, from my point of view, is not a good solution, okay? The other option is not good for us, okay? There's a lot of fake news out there. People told me that there's no affordable housing for senior, there's no affordable housing for teacher, there's no affordable housing for police, for firefighter, for nurse, for the low-income people. For Tier 2, those news, those are not fact. So collect the fact, and then make your decision. I'm not asking you to have to go the way I want it, but as I say earlier, democracy is allowed for an active debate. And then you can say you support, you can say you're against it, but it's not stifling the other side not to say it. So I seen enough, and I just brought it up, this meeting, there's a lot of fake news, okay? So you have to be really careful what you do, and then really seek the truth, and then do what the right thing for this city. It's up to our decision tonight, it's up to the residents' decision on the referendum. If you don't like it, so be it. So I think it's time to move forward, because the option, forget about SB 35, leaving the Valco vacant the way it is, is not good for this city at all. So that's my point. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Chang. We've all had a chance to give our comments and deliberation. I would ask that we vote with our lights at this time, with regard to the first motion that is on the table, that has to do with ordinance number 18-2177. Please vote with your lights.
And the motion carries. Singh, Paul, Chang, Vaidhyanathan, yes. Scharf, no.
I apologize, I actually misvoted. That should be a no vote. Sorry. Sorry. I had a brain bleed. I apologize.
4 to 1 is great.
I apologize for that. So if we could, all right, thank you very much. Sorry.
Do you want me to push the button for you?
No, that's fine. Thank you.
I'll push the button for him.
Motion carries. Singh, Chang, Vaidhyanathan, yes. Scharf, Paul, no.
Okay. At this point, I would ask our council, would we like to have the motion within that motion regarding the enactment of each ordinance as it is presented to us? Or would we like to have the enactment motions after all of the initial motions?
Does it matter legally?
It doesn't matter, anyway.
We're not aware that it would matter one way or the other.
Do you have a preference?
Let's do one at a time.
I would like to do one at a time.
All right.
It creates a better record.
But otherwise, we'll be coming back, another accusation.
Okay, very good. So would anyone like to move that?
I already moved already.
No, no. You have to move the enactment.
No, no, no. We voted one by one.
Well, let me try it. Okay. I move that ordinance number 18-2177 be enacted.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Singh. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Please vote with your lights.
And the motion carries. Singh, Chang, Vaidhyanathan, yes. Scharf, Paul, no.
Thanks very much. And so we will go to the second motion that was on the table regarding ordinance number 18-2178. Please vote with your lights.
Can I just ask a process question here? Do we need, we have these three motions stacked up. I'm unfamiliar with that. Do we, is it more proper for us to remake the motion at this time? Or is it okay that we have these three in queue?
I think it's fine to have that three in queue, as long as you vote on each respective motion separately.
Okay. Everybody up here is nodding? They're happy? Okay.
Okay.
I just want to be sure we're doing...
I appreciate that from a process perspective. So we have the lights. Please vote with your lights on 18-2178.
Motion carries. Singh, Chang, Vaidhyanathan, yes. Scharf, Paul, no.
And would anyone like to move that ordinance number 18-2178 be enacted?
I'll move that number, ordinance number 18-2178 be enacted.
Second.
Hey, Vice Mayor Singh moves. Councilmember Chang seconds. Please vote with your lights.
Motion carries. Singh, Chang, Vaidhyanathan, yes. Scharf, Paul, no.
Okay, very good. So our very last motion that is on the table is ordinance number 18-2179. Please vote with your lights regarding that.
Motion carries. Singh, Chang, Vaidhyanathan, yes. Scharf, Paul, no.
Hey, thank you. And then finally, would anyone like to motion, to enact ordinance number 18-2179?
I move that ordinance number 18-2179 be enacted.
Okay. Anyone second?
Second.
All right. Vice Mayor Singh's motions. Councilmember Chang seconds. Please vote with your lights.
Motion carries. Singh, Chang, Vaidhyanathan, yes. Scharf, Paul, no.
Hey, very good. I would like to thank the public, as well as our staff, as well as our outside consultants and my fellow councilmembers for bringing forward this process. It has been a long journey. I would ask that we stay civil with each other going forward. I think we've put together a lot of different perspectives and viewpoints out there, and I personally think that we all have a sense that the democratic process can work very well, and it has functioned very well in terms of getting these various perspectives out there tonight and previously. And so, thank you very much for this. We will be going on to public hearings at this point. Madam City Clerk, are there any public hearings in our agenda this evening?
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right, very good. We have ordinances and action items in the initial. Item number 14, and I'll go ahead and maybe pause it for half a minute, because I know that the chambers is probably clearing out to a certain degree, so we'll let that happen. So thank you very much. Item number 14, the subject is the authorization of a grant application to the County of Santa Clara's All-Inclusive Playground Grant Program. I'm very much looking forward to this item. It is something that is, just to give a very brief background, there are concepts of parks known as all-inclusive playgrounds, and that has to do with access to the developmentally disabled and the physically disabled. And I heard recently that these concepts of inclusion often just make a better product for everyone. And I can most certainly attest to that in the context of all-inclusive playgrounds. So very, very happy to have our Director of Public Works here, Jeff Milkes, as well as Gil Seeds from our Parks and Recreation, or Recreation and Community Services Department, as it's known now, to introduce this idea. So we have a pretty quick turnaround here, from what I understand, because the county has authorized a certain amount of funding for grants, if that's correct. So thank you, Director Milks, as well as Ms. Seeds for being here. And do you need a little bit more time to... So very good. I'll give you a couple more moments to get that ready, but just anecdotally, I will say that having taken my own children, they're six and four now, to these playgrounds in the past, whether it be San Jose Rotary Park, or the Magical Bridge Playground in Palo Alto, without knowing that it was an all-inclusive kind of concept, it was just, it struck something, it struck my wife and I as just being an extremely nice park. And then, of course, later... And then, of course, later on, when we were interfacing with county, I believe that Councilmember Vaidy Nathan and I went out to one of the county Board of Supervisors meetings to support funding for these all-inclusive playgrounds. We didn't get into it with regard to Cupertino's first round of funding or, or the first round of funding from the county for any Cupertino parks. But now we have another opportunity. And so, I'm pretty much talked out, but it looks like you, you do have some, some progress.
I can, I can make my comments now, so.
Very good, thank you Councilmember Vaidy Nathan.
So, just like you, Mayor Paul, I, I went to the parks and David Fung was there with me and a bunch of Parks and Recommissioners were there. It was, it was really eye-opening and we, we learned so much about children with special needs and, and what kind of things they look forward to when they go to these parks. And both the parks were really good, the Rotary, San Jose Park Playground was different from the one in Palo Alto Magical Bridges, but they were both unique and really, when you talk about all-inclusive, they were really all-inclusive. And, and all children were really enjoying it and I should say the adults, we enjoyed it too. So, over to you, Director.
All right, welcome, thank you. Thank you Councilmember Vaidy Nathan. We're all set on the presentation? Great.
Yes, good, I'm live. Thank you for that welcome, Mayor Paul, and thank you councilmembers for having us here this evening. We are here to discuss a grant opportunity for funding for an all-inclusive playground. And just as an introduction, there's been a lot of discussion tonight that the, the community we live in has people of all ages and abilities and there are very few places that they can play and pursue recreational activities together and that disabilities come in all forms, they're not just physical, but developmental, mental, emotional, and that a, a large number of our population is affected in some manner. We have challenges in all different manners. This slide calls out some of them. And the statistics from the National Organization on Disability are that nearly 20% of the United States population has a sensory, intellectual, physical, or developmental disability. A little more, a few more statistics we can breeze by because everyone's aware of how widely our community is affected, but there's some description here about what an all-inclusive playground delivers and how it really does welcome people of all types, including people that are frail, people that are aging, so it's all of us. In the last capital improvement program, the city council funded a study to examine opportunities to build an all-inclusive playground in Cupertino. There were three primary tasks, identify potential sites, develop sample conceptual plans, and then to provide materials to support possible grant applications. The sites, the primary site selection criteria are on this slide, identifying what kinds of sites could actually host this kind of a playground. There are special considerations that would apply to that. And using our sorting criteria, we came up with four potential locations in Cupertino. These four parks that were all large enough and appropriate. And they are geographically dispersed throughout the city. They're circled in red on this slide, Montevista Park on the west, Memorial Park north central, Jollyman Park south central, and Creekside Park towards the east side. The conclusions, after going through numerous evaluation criteria and a pretty extensive process, were that Jollyman Park was the top-ranked site in Cupertino at either of the existing playground locations. These findings were shared with the Commission, the Parks and Recreation Commission, on June 7th. And based on the Commission's concurrence, the consultant did develop sample concepts. The concepts all have some common elements. And we'll just, oh, this is Jollyman Park showing the northerly playground location and the southerly playground location on the west side of Jollyman Park by South Stelling Road. The common elements would include a zone for swinging, zones for spinning, slide zones, climbing zones, sound and tactile zones, a tot zone, and on the lower left, you'd see one of the kinds of playhouses that we are envisioning.
I'm sorry, a point of order real quickly. So, there might be a, a potential conflict in terms of residence of one of our councilmembers, so she would like to recuse herself on this side.
Thank you. Conceptual plans were presented to the Parks and Recreation Commission on August 6th with budgetary estimates and the public input at that meeting was favorable in support of pursuing an all-inclusive playground in our community. These are two concepts and a concept for the northerly playground here and a refined concept for a playground at the southerly playground site that would, could replace the current one. And then we get to the opportunity that is before us. As our councilmembers have pointed out, back in February of last year, the County Board of Supervisors was considering creating a funding program to fund all-inclusive playgrounds in our county. And indeed, Mayor Paul, who was Vice Mayor and City Manager and other officials, attended that meeting and spoke in favor of it. The $10 million program was approved by the County Board of Supervisors with $2 million available in each district. Applications were invited in July. And we had just had funding approved to do a feasibility study in our community, so we were not yet ready to apply in that funding cycle. And Mayor Vaidy Nathan did send a letter to the Board of Supervisors in support of the program. So, the funding in our district was all allocated. It was approved in May and the funding agreements themselves approved in, excuse me, in January and the funding agreements approved in May. Well, three weeks ago today, we were alerted that a new funding cycle had been issued with a fresh $10 million available, $2 million for each of the five supervisory districts in our county.
Can you tell us who got the $2 million in the last cycle?
Yes, Mountain View and Palo Alto in our district.
Oh, even though Palo Alto already has the Magical Bridge?
Yes, they, the primary award was to Mountain View, but Addison's Elementary School got a smaller grant of $300,000 to do a school-based inclusive play.
Great, all right, thank you.
Installation, yeah. So, this funding opportunity has come forward and there's a very snappy turnaround in the grant universe. The applications are due on October 12th, so that is next week. And here we are before you tonight. If the council's interested in pursuing a grant application, there's a couple of things we would need to commit to, delivering the project within three years, operating the project for 20 years, and coming up with the rest of the project funding. And it would need to be a one-to-one match of non-grant funding, you know, from other sources. And those conditions are pretty normal for grants.
So, so what is the rest of the funding or are you getting to that?
Yes, just about to. We're right, we're right here. This is the heart of this, which is kind of why we're before you tonight. If the city council is interested in applying for this, interested in this opportunity, staff recommends a $1.2 million city contribution, requesting a substantial grant from the grant program. The better part of $2 million may be 1.8 range and providing the balance via fundraising with a $5 million total project budget. And that's very consistent with the same scale of playgrounds that were successful in attracting the 1.7 to $2 million awards in this immediately prior funding cycle. The ones in Sunnyvale and Mountain View and Emma Prush in San Jose and Morgan Hill each received very sizable grants, the better part of $2 million. And they each had a fairly similar funding equation. They were pretty much in that arena. And each planned to attract significant money through a donations process. And so, if the council is interested in staff pursuing this, we would suggest a similar strategy. And in this case, we haven't had time to return with a well-thought-out fundraising approach. We would be happy to come back to you swiftly with some recommendations on that. But this very speedy turnaround has not allowed for that. Last time, they had three months to, in the application process, and here we've got just a couple of weeks. We would also, of course, advise advising neighbors and stakeholders in a planning process should the council wish us to pursue a grant and should an award occur and should the process move forward. And we are happy to answer any questions and we are here to understand what the council would wish.
Look, Councilmember Sheriff, you had another question?
So, if we pursue this grant and we approve the 1.2 million here, do they require that we already identify where the rest of the money is coming from in advance?
No, they do not.
Thank you.
Councilmember, Vice Mayor Sings?
Thank you. $5 million, can you talk to us about why a playground costs $5 million?
Yeah, I'll, I'll give a speedy answer and, and Director Milkus can probably weigh in.
I mean, it, it, just to help me here. You know, is that what it costs in Palo Alto and Mountain View to do similar projects?
Yes.
Okay, is there any learning that goes on so we don't have to? You know, by the time we do the fourth or fifth or sixth one in the county, we don't have to spend elaborate fees on consultants and, and others? I mean, I'm, I, I, I am constantly stunned at the numbers that get put up to do public projects. It's not like I'm not supportive at all, but.
Yeah.
I'm just, I just scratch my head when I see you put up pictures of pieces of very nicely engineered pieces of plastic all assembled together and the price tag totals more than, you know, it would cost to build two or three houses in this city.
Yes, it's certainly an expensive undertaking. The elements are still at this point primarily custom. There, we're getting closer to having manufacturers start creating some of these things. And Mountain View's project is $4.5 million, Morgan House is $4.55 million, the Emma Prush project is $5 million.
I mean, for other public procurements like this, we would go in with other cities and try to do a joint purchasing agreement. Has anybody thought about that in this case?
I have not heard of that yet, but that's a good thought.
Okay.
And Director Milkus, would you like to clarify a little bit?
Yeah, I, I'd just like to comment that these are specialized pieces of playgrounds equipment and I would suspect that we could find people to customize them for us. But I would encourage us to stick with the national, you know, with the, with the companies that, that is their business creating these because then it helps to shift and ensure that they own liability in case there ever was, was an issue with the playground. It's typical standard.
So, you're saying we wouldn't get sued for the use of this, this playground?
No, but just as a best practice in any kind of playground, it's always better to go with a, you know, with a, a very credible organization who manufactures these as part of what they, as a core part of their business. And so, we would be looking at a very limited number of companies that I think create these kinds of, of very unique structures. They're very different than, than your normal playgrounds, you know, playground pieces of equipment. Because they, they do go, go a special extra set of, they go the extra mile to ensure everybody can, can take part in every part of each piece of equipment.
Okay, but we could look at perhaps a procurement agreement with other cities that also received the grant. We could be looking at some, doing some value engineering to try to be maybe a little smarter, to learn things from existing instances of these that, that are already here. And see if, see if we can reduce the amount of money it takes to build a playground.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Certainly.
Thanks, any other questions? Councilmember Chang, any questions on this item? So, I have a question with regard to the funding. So, you stated that you're going to try to apply for 1.8 million approximately and then 1.2 million is what's proposed from the city at this point. And so, with a budget of approximately $5 million, is, is that differential of $2 million covered by the fundraising? Or is there a different type of approach to, you know, the, that remainder of the amount that would need to be raised?
Yes, our current thinking is that we would aim for that as a fundraising target and that is in fact the proposal on the Emma Prush project that was funded. They are anticipating $2 million in donations. Mountain View is at 1.825 million. And to date, these sorts of projects have been able to attract significant private donations.
Okay, and so, if we're not able to raise our fundraising target, where would you expect the differential to come from? Or, or does that actually affect our ability to invoke the, the grant?
There are a couple of options. One option that staff would recommend is putting in a couple of major bid alternate items in the bid package so that if, and designing it so that those things could be separated out and added later so that if our donations goal is not met, we could still build an excellent playground, but without a couple of, and without one of the more expensive features or two. That's one possible idea. And the, and certainly, we could push out the bidding date and continue fundraising and just have a more extended effort at that and see how we do and then return to the council and share our progress and ask your direction.
Okay, great, thanks Gil. Any other questions? Councilmember Sheriff?
So, if we don't get the grant, can we still fundraise and build this? The grant such is not a huge percentage of the cost, I mean, it's significant, maybe 25 or 22%, but, I mean, this would seem to be something that we could fundraise for, you know, pretty easily. I mean, maybe I'm totally wrong, but it would seem to be the thing that people would be willing to donate for.
Of, of course, we, we, we certainly can. The grant is just one step toward funding it.
Great, well, thanks very much. And at this point, if there aren't further questions from the council at this point, I'll open it up to any of the public that would like to speak on the item. Madam City Clerk, shake of the head, so there is no public commentary card on the item. Bringing it back up here, would anyone care to further deliberate? Councilmember Sheriff, you said you'd like to.
I'll make a motion if, unless people want to talk more about it.
No, very good, please, please proceed.
So, I make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 18-100, authorizing application to the County of Santa Clara's all-inclusive playground grant program for funding to replace an existing playground at Jollyman Park with an all-inclusive playground and related actions.
Second.
Okay, there are, Councilmember Chang seconds. And I actually saw a number of us reaching for our lights, so I, I think that there seems to be good support. So, please vote with your lights if there's no desire for further deliberation on the item. All right, very good.
And the motion carries with by the nothing, recusing.
Very good, we're now at the end of our agendized items. Thank you Gil, thank you Jeff, appreciate it. We are at the time in our agenda where we talk about council communications as well as outreach to the public and possibly follow-ups from the earlier part of tonight's meeting. Acting City Manager Chan, would you like to make any reports out from staff in this last two weeks?
No new report, thank you.
Okay, very good. Would anyone like to kick us off with regard to council reports from these last two weeks?
Well, I, I do think it would be good to hear from staff on the item that we heard in oral regarding the folks on Prospect Road. I know city staff has been busy over, over a long period of time on that and I thought for the, the other folks that may be concerned, if, we, we did receive. for the, the other folks that may be concerned, if, we did receive some written correspondence on this following their letter, and wonder if you just might, for, for everybody's benefit, give us a brief report on that.
Very good. Thank you, Vice Mayor Sinks, and we have our Director of Public Works back up here, Tim Borden. No? City Manager Chan, would you like to speak to that item?
Thank you. The staff did look into the, the property in question on Prospect. They actually have been working on it for several months. Initially, they were unable to get access into, inside the property, but they were finally able to. And there's a list of violations that staff have identified and been working with the property owner. They will inform the people that has signed the petition on our progress, and at this point, we are still working on, on the, bringing the property into compliance. And so, I plan to report back to the council via this form, and also in writing to the petitioners and giving them update on the progress.
So, have we fully, just a follow-up question, have we fully empowered in any council action staff to deal with this? The requesters said we want it declared as a public nuisance. Can you just explain for the benefit of everybody?
So, at this point, it's well within the staff's authority to enforce any violations and put them in compliance. And I think at this point, it's the best approach to follow that. If it's not effective, then staff will come back to the council, and perhaps there's other legislative options that is available for the city to enforce compliance.
Great, so, so the other question I had coming out of oral was from when Kathy spoke about Regnart Creek in a letter from the Water District on August 21st.
Vice Mayor, before you go into that, I had a question about this one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, we can just finish the item.
Councilmember Iden, I think a follow-up on the item on Prospect?
Yeah, so, I had visited this house last year, and another very specific complaint they had was they do have two, three seniors live on that street, and they're not even able to walk on the sidewalk, so they end up walking on the street, which is a hazard. So, we need to, there could be something that we could do for just protecting the sidewalk. Can we do that?
We certainly will be looking to, into that as well as other violations.
Yeah, basically, there's stuff in the sidewalk that prevents them from using it, especially someone with a wheelchair, so, thank you.
So, I wondered, do the owners live in this house, or is it a rental house?
I don't have the answer to that, but I certainly can let you know after we, after I get the information.
Great, yeah, I think the block sidewalks are an issue all over the city. Usually, they're from the open house signs, but I would think we would have the ability to move any obstructions out of the way.
To, Councilmember, to answer your question, you do, as a public entity, you can remove, summarily remove encroachments. I mean, if it's a large item on the sidewalk, then that might require some more skill, but obviously, we have the ability to do that as a public entity.
And I wonder, you know, the encroachment in San Francisco where my mother-in-law lives, you are actually allowed to partially block the sidewalk with a vehicle as long as you leave two of the large squares available so people can get by. And I wonder in Cupertino, what the law is, can you not have anything extending over the sidewalk, or, I mean, it's not just cars. I see in my neighborhood, people have their head just growing way out, and you can't get by, you have to walk in the street. And, I mean, it's been that way for years, and I think that's it only, anything only gets done if somebody complains about it. Nobody goes around looking for violations.
Right, what I can do is work with Amy and city staff planning on this case. You do have authority under the municipal code to declare a property a public nuisance. I think what the city manager is saying is we're trying to, or the city is trying to address it through code enforcement, but at some point, if it continues, then it's within the jurisdiction of the city council to declare it. We can also pursue civil action under public nuisance state law, which we've done, I've done, you know, in my past life. But in this instance, in terms of encroachments, I don't think your municipal code is that defined in terms of the extent of the encroachment and what you can allow. It's a case-by-case basis, but we'll review that with staff, and Amy and I will discuss this case.
I appreciate that.
Very good, and then the next item you were asking about?
The next thing I was interested in was residents who said the letter on August 21st from the Water District to the city. Did we take that into account as we were preparing for this phase? I mean, I note, it seems to have come in the same day we had our, our hearing, is that correct?
That's correct. Tim Borden, Director of Public Works, we received it just, just a couple hours before the hearing.
Okay.
Some of the comments were not, were not consistent with what we directly had heard from the Water District previously. We have meeting minutes that, that, for example, say that, that they can work with us on, on rails along, along the creek bank, under certain conditions. So, so what this letter that we received was, was really a, we, we met with them subsequent to this letter, met with their COO, who had kind of a higher level view of this. What, what, what they did was collected comments from many of their maintenance managers, their vegetation manager, their, and their watershed manager, who, you know, trails make things more difficult really for, for some of the operations that they perform.
Sure.
What, in meeting with them and discussing it, what we really found was their, their problem that they, they foresee that they've seen in other cities is that when trails get closed temporarily for them to perform maintenance work, the, the comments come to the Water District instead of the local jurisdiction. We assured them that, that through the joint use agreement that we'll be entering into and will come to council, you know, once, once the design is complete, that we will, we will take on a communications protocol that, you know, diverts that blame from the, from the Water District. We understand that they need to maintain those operations.
We don't need to have a lengthy conversation here. I just want to be sure that we're taking this letter into account, and as we proceed with the next phase, we're committed to working with the Water District to resolve any and all issues that were raised in that letter.
Absolutely, and in fact, the, the final study is on our website with, with the Water District letter and our response letter included.
Okay.
In the, in the study.
And at some point, we, in order for us to actually do anything, we need to come together with the Water District and be in complete agreement, right?
Exactly the point.
Because we are, we are on their property.
That's correct. So, there will be a joint use agreement that details, you know, where rails will be, where we will remove them for their activities, how we'll communicate.
Okay, thank you, that helps a lot.
Very good. Anyone like to report out on interactions in the last couple of weeks? No? Shakes of the head?
I'll go.
Okay, Councilmember Scharf?
How's your trip in China?
I'm ready to put this up on the screen.
Great.
So, last Wednesday through Sunday, I visited one of our many friendship cities in China, Tongxiang. Did I pronounce that right, Barry?
Yes.
Tongxiang. And they were very glad to have someone from Cupertino come. Last year, when they unveiled the statue, unfortunately, no council member could attend. And Angela Chen from our Sustainability Commission went last year, and she came again this year, and I, I went with her this time. And her husband also came, and this is the statue that they put into their Phoenix Park, Fenghuang. Did I say that right, Barry? Or not? For a phoenix. So, it's very nice. They also have another statue of a city in South Carolina that they just put in, but, but I think ours is actually much better. And they, they took us around, we went, visited an electric car plant. I drove one of the electric cars on their test track, which was quite exhilarating. They took us to a fiberglass factory and a gear factory, and then they showed us a tourist city nearby, Wuzhen, which was, it's like the Venice of, of their province. So, very good time. I gave a speech before their business conference, and had many banquets and a lot of toasting. It was a good experience, and I'm grateful that I was able to go. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thanks, Councilmember Scharf. So, Vice Mayor Sinks, would you like to give updates from the last couple of weeks?
You bet.
All right, great.
Let's see, I was at the, at the climate conference, and the Air District had some affiliate events, and one of the really interesting, so there, there are actually already EV trucks running around the streets of San Francisco, a bunch of goodwill vans that are EV, and yes, they're being subsidized by the Air District. But it's, it's interesting, I know we signed the Diesel Free by 33 pledge, and so, it seems that there are feasible means to actually get there, and this will be, be a major thing for us, both in terms of human health. Particulate matter from diesel is actually the, the biggest cancer factor in the Bay Area, we're told by experts. And so, both human health and carbon footprint can be greatly improved if we can manage to become diesel-free by 33. So, I appreciate everybody on the council signing up for that. We had the Toyacaua Sister City delegation in, and I was able to attend the welcome and the picnic, and I know most of you were there, I saw you at these various events. That was very cool. And, let's see. Mayor Paul and I were at the, at the courts on Friday to hear about homelessness and the new law that requires no, mandates no more bail, and the impacts that that's having in our superior court system, I found that fascinating, and I think we learned quite a bit, hearing from those who are really on the front line in dealing with folks who are down and out. I mean, statistics that indicate that a lot of the, if people are experiencing increased rates of crime, a primary factor is the high cost of housing. And people not being able to pay their rent, people being desperate and needing money just to put a roof over their head. So, it was, it was fascinating to hear from, I mean, right, the, the family law judge said, you know, very often when a couple splits, then one household becomes two households, and one of them economically can't make it work, and that puts stress on everything. There's squalor in the house, you know, custody fights. So, lack of housing is really creating a lot of problems in, in the court system, and they cited some statistics. So, that was fascinating. I attended the Safe Routes to School event that was put together by our Public Works team with Safe Routes to School coordinators around the city that are, they were sharing their ideas, things that they've done, and with a lot of energy and excitement. And so, I appreciate this, this program. Sherry Walcoviac, who's joined the city team, along with everybody else, and, yeah, there's a lot of enthusiasm about how to incent walking and biking to school, and I spoke at some, for a bit of time, on how the bike plan is enhancing our ability to make the city better for students and parents that get frustrated having to drive their kid to and from school on a daily basis, and struggling through the traffic to do so. And I think I'll leave it there.
Okay, excellent, thank you for that excellent summary. And so, the only item that I would add, because we had a few overlaps, is that this past weekend, Senator Jim Bell had a car seat safety check event that was held over at the Oaks Shopping Center parking lot, and I want to thank the owner of the Oaks Shopping Center for allowing us to utilize that, and was helping to coordinate a little bit of the securing of that space. So, that was a successful event, and, you know, look forward to bringing those types of, you know, those services forward to the community in the future as well. So, thank you very much, it is relatively...
I have, I have one item you just reminded me.
Oh, yes, Councilmember Vice Mayor Nothing?
One unique, that is not the same as what many of us attended together. I went for the BEMEC brunch on Sunday. It was a very inspiring event and great speeches from our own Assembly Member Evan Low, as well as Proton President Tony Atkins. So, it was really very, very helpful to hear their comments and what's happening, be it at city level, county level, or state level, and why we need representation at the table. So, it was a very good event to be at, thank you.
Excellent, thank you as well for staying with us towards the end of the meeting. I know it's tough getting through when you're under the weather. So, without any further commentary from our council, I thank you for the evening, and we will adjourn the meeting until October 16th, 2018. Thank you very much and good night. Meeting adjourned.